This looks like a wedding, but only one side came. Okay. So with that, I will call our meeting to order. Welcome this evening. Our Roll Call Blaster City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
The record should reflect that all members are present.
With that, if you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I will lead it tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And according to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow the public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for the items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. To speak on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the city clerk secretary's staff. Speaker slips are available just outside the council chambers. And speakers tonight, because we'll have a lot of speakers, will have two minutes to address the city council. Approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson, is next.
Thank you, mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, we have one presentation this evening. We're pleased to be recognizing Ryan Carlson for his life-saving efforts. I'd like to invite my fellow council members, Fire Chief Ned Vanderpoel and Mr. Carlson, to join me down here at the podium. And then we'll go down there. Okay, so we have a proclamation here. Whereas the Vista Fire Department has a citizen recognition procedure to recognize members of the community who perform an act of distinct heroism, life-saving, or who provide outstanding service for the public safety of our community, whereas Ryan Carlson has been nominated to receive such recognition for life-saving efforts. And whereas on January 26, 2022, Ryan Carlson, who is an employee of the Vista Irrigation District, and his coworker, Christian Martin, observed a gentleman working in his yard that appeared unwell. They then noticed that the gentleman had collapsed. Ryan quickly checked for a pulse and breathing while his coworker called 911. He found the heart rate slow and the gentleman not breathing. Ryan initiated cardiopulmonary resuscitation, CPR, and continued compressions for over six minutes until emergency medical services arrived, EMS arrived. Whereas the American Heart Association reports that 475,000 Americans die from cardiac arrest each year. And whereas if performed immediately, CPR can double or triple the chance of survival from an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. Whereas only about 46% of the people who experience an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest get the immediate help they need before professional help arrives. Whereas the responding EMS crew believe Ryan's rapid actions led to the successful return of circulation and transport of the patient to the cardiac center where the patient began their recovery. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the city council present this proclamation to Ryan Carlson for his life-saving efforts and hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 23, 2022, as Ryan Carlson Day in the city of Vista. So congratulations and thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Fire Chief Ned Vanderpoel. Okay. Okay. Shall we do it in front of the podium, maybe? Okay. Come around here.
And then also, we have with us today, the patient, Mr. Kissick. If you could come forward, please, we'd like to bring you up. So he has a very fascinating story as well about the entire process and what he recalls from the event, and then basically five days later. And as you can see, they've become fast friends.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Happy to see you.
Tremendous work that you have to do and put these guys out on the front line. And I just can't say the words right now. But with that, so God bless him and his workers. He said in the afternoon, he was with his mother in his bed, overhand for a brief moment. I had my daughter in mourning. And then your husband, yeah, sitting around waiting to practice. This is while your wife was sitting there a long time here. So, boys, I'm right there. Don't have anything other to say other than thank you. I had about one third of a second before I hit the ground and my idea was going on. So, did that split anybody in the air? Or any questions? Or...
We'll take one more picture, but we'll get a couple other people up here first. So Captain Steve Wecklich is from the crew, and then Marouf Suliman, who's also one of the firefighters that responded, if they could come up. So they took over from Ryan. And firefighter paramedic Delaney, sorry. I thought you were on the truck right now, which he is. And then also Roxanne, who's our emergency services officer, put this all together. So certainly appreciate her. And she is a big champion, and she'll talk to anybody about hands-only CPR and the importance of learning CPR and being proficient in that so that we can have more of these type of experiences in the community and having an AED nearby and all those good public education moments. And then from Tri-City Hospital, we also have the head of the ER here, because obviously Tri-City is our medical center partner, and having a good relationship with them and counting on them is very important. So that's the, that's the team right there. So Fred, we'll take another picture with everybody.
Got the whole group over here? Everybody in front. I'll take out your... Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have six consent items this evening, and I don't see any, let's see, oh, council member for, I don't see the public, no, we don't have any hope in the public. Okay, so Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I'd make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda that's not removed by the council of the public.
Councilmember Melendez.
A second.
Okay, see, no further discussion. We'll cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. We have one public hearing this evening, and that's our public hearing number one is general plan amendment, zone change, and 25-lot tentative subdivision map at 2277 Vista Grande Avenue. Public hearing is now open. Community Development Director John Conley will introduce the item.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening. We have Chris Winters, our associate planner, who is the project planner, and will be making the presentation.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor Ritter. This public hearing item is for the Vista Grande subdivision. It's a request for a mitigated negative declaration, general plan amendment, zone change, and tentative subdivision map for a 25-lot subdivision on Vista Grande Drive. This slide shows the area, and the project site is located on the northeastern portion of the city. The blue line on the slide shows the city boundary. It goes around the project site that's marked in red. Currently consists of two legal parcels comprising 17 total acres. There's an existing single-family residence on site at this time. A little bit about the project history. It was annexed into the city in 2017 with a zone change to A1 agricultural zone for a 14-lot subdivision. That map is still active. On January 12, 2021, the council discussed a preliminary proposal from the applicant to allow for an increase in density to two dwelling units per acre. At that time, it was designed as a 28-lot subdivision. Then on December 7, the project went to the planning commission for the first time, held for a public hearing, a request to amend the general plan designation from rural residential, the one dwelling unit acre maximum, to low-density residential for two dwelling units per acre, and to make a corresponding zone change from A1 to E1 for the 28-lot subdivision. The item was continued to January 18. The project was revised per the commission's comments, and it returned with some changes made that are summarized on the next slide. The commission made its recommendation at that time for approval of the project to the city council. Based upon the feedback from the planning commission, the following changes were made by the applicant. The project has been decreased from 28 to 25 lots. Lots 6 through 11 were enlarged to three-quarters acres in size to provide a better transition towards the larger lot sizes located in the nearby county area. And the private road was redesigned to include 16 street-side parking stalls. There's additional parking information on this slide if anyone's interested. This slide shows the current configuration with a looping street that goes through the project. A sidewalk would be provided on one side of the street, which is the interior portion in the middle of the slide. Over on the east side of Vista Grande Drive, it would be gated for emergency access only to where it connects with Vista Grande Terrace, and there would be three streetlights provided around the tract in the locations shown there. The proposed land use and zoning on the left is the general plan current RR designation for rural residential that would be changed to low-density residential. For zoning, it would go from A1 to E1, which would be consistent with the properties to the southwest. Under general plan performance, the subdivision is consistent with the existing general plan land use designation and zoning to the southwest within the Vista's jurisdiction. The proposed half-acre and three-quarter-acre lots would be consistent with the low-density land use designation that's proposed. The zoning standards will create a development pattern consistent with residential land uses by establishing the maximum building heights and setbacks and so on. The project-related improvements will improve the Vista Grande Drive roadway to improve vehicular access and provide a neighborhood sidewalk. The project has been conditioned to provide off-site improvements to the intersection of Warmlands Avenue and East Vista Way, right-turn lane, new pedestrian crossings, ramps, and so on, and the applicant will provide a few more details on that. Also, under general plan performance, our consistency with the policies that have been listed in the MND for the project, a few are listed here that I'll quickly run through. The design provides a safe, comfortable environment for residents by incorporating landscaping with shade trees along the streets and sidewalks. Policy 1.5 includes the landscaping of roadway areas. Of the 17 total acres for the project site, 4.6 acres of landscaping will be provided. Policy 1.6 requires or strives for the undergrounding of utilities, so the electric and communication utilities will be placed underground during construction. Policy 2.1 is to maintain the residential character of the area by providing for large lot, single-family residential development. The proposed density of 1.6 units per acre of half-acre and three-quarter-acre lots will maintain the semi-rural character of their surroundings. Policy 5.2, ensure that the entire right-of-way is designed to accommodate appropriate modes of transportation. The project will meet the city's street design requirements with a 24-foot-wide travel lane that will accommodate emergency vehicle access and two-way traffic, along with the pedestrian improvements that were mentioned at East Vista Way. Policy 9.1, provide land use designations that support semi-rural housing. The development will be consistent with nearby estate residential land uses. Added conditions of approval that were applied by the planning commission, number 28 through 32, the project's construction traffic is prohibited from using Vista Grande Terrace, and at no time shall construction or grading activities block access to Vista Grande Terrace or its easement holders. Number 28, vehicular access shall be provided for the existing residents that take access on Vista Grande Drive at all times during construction. All structures on lots 4, 10, 22, 24, and 25 shall be restricted to single-story construction. The 16 street-side parking stalls shall be designated for guests only. And lastly, the street-side parking stalls shall be designed with a curb at both ends to allow for easier vehicular access. Under the environmental review, a MND was prepared for the proposed project in accordance with SEQA. It determined that the project would not result in any unmitigated significant environmental impacts. The MND was circulated for public review from October 2 through November 1. The amended project does not include any potentially significant environmental impacts or increase any of the analyzed data. That would require further mitigation than what was already done, so recirculation of the NECDAC is not required. Staff's recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution, adopting the mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring program, to adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment to low-density, along with the tentative subdivision map for 25 lots, and also to approve an ordinance changing the zoning from A1 to the E1 estate zone on the two parcels identified as parcel APN 171, 105, and number 28. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant also has a prepared presentation when the council's ready. Thank you.
Okay, is Greg Perrin here? Is he going to make your presentation now?
Good evening. Thank you, guys, very much for the opportunity to come and present our updated and refined project. You guys really appreciate the opportunity. To kind of further a little bit what Chris and staff have done, just want to give a little context. We spent the better part of the last 14 months working on a plan that we feel is very well-balanced, very thought-through. And when we set out on this endeavor, we kind of listed out some project goals that we had throughout the duration of it. One of them was to provide a sustainable community, something that was going to be consistent with the surrounding area, incorporate elements within that area, make sure that we're taking into account other people's opinions. Right now, the existing site, and I'll show you a couple pictures, is, again, 17 acres. There's an existing residence on the structure, or on the property, but the remaining of it is rather fallow, overgrown in certain areas, creates fire hazards, and, you know, by us developing the property, we feel it's going to further enhance the area from a lot of different aspects: infrastructure, fire, life, safety, et cetera. One of the other things we really set out to do is really do our best to engage the community, engage city staff, engage council and planning commission to really kind of hear and listen to what the constituents and the people of the city of Vista really wanted to kind of hear from our project. And so we have met with them many times. I have a quick slide I'll show you as to how we did that, but our goal and intent with these was not just to check a box, it was really to sit there and listen to the community and really understand from their perspective, the good, the bad, and the indifferent, and really do our best to try to incorporate where we can certain elements that would be consistent with not only our objective and goals, but also, you know, some of their concerns and some of their opinions as well. Quickly kind of touching the project, you'll see here a couple pictures. We see the one with the mattress in front was actually sent to us by the adjacent resident just south of us, and you'll see in certain situations, the property has trash and other kind of debris that gets dumped on it because it's a, it's a large piece of property, 17 acres, again, not really well-kept to a certain degree. And so you'll see some issues with just kind of the surrounding area and what gets, you know, dropped off. There's also some issues with safety because it's just undeveloped, and a lot of people trespass onto the property and utilize it for other things that aren't otherwise warranted. The, for those of you who've kind of been up there, the existing Vista Grande Drive is a road that is to be desired. It's about maybe 10 at best, 12 feet wide, very deteriorated. The existing residents have trouble accessing it. We've spoken to them. We understand the trash has an issue with it. Fire Department has extreme issues with it as far as getting access to this particular area. Our development would enhance that road. We're actually going to take Vista Grande Drive and dedicate a good portion of our property to widen that road and ultimately be a 28-foot ride roadway. So we think that's going to obviously increase and enhance the infrastructure to allow for not only access for our future residents, the existing residents to the south, as well as fire life safety. Right now, too, just with the base of the way, the topography, everything kind of drains from the northeast, if you will, kind of down southwest, and right now, there's no proper drainage devices in place. And so when a rain event takes place, similar to today, we've spoken to the neighbors, and a lot of times, the debris and runoff will run right into their driveway. It'll affect Vista Grande Drive. It gets into their garage, and it becomes kind of a nuisance more than anything. And so by the development of this project, you know, we're going to put in different measures, best practices, to make sure that that stormwater is captured, is treated, and then kind of discharged accordingly. To kind of reiterate, just a summary of what we're proposing, again, it's 25 single-family detached lots, 19 or half-acre, 6 or three-quarter minimum acre lots. To kind of touch on briefly our community outreach over a period of time, again, we started this endeavor about 14 months ago, and we had a pre-application in January of 2020. Here's a quick summary of kind of what we've done to date. From a neighborhood standpoint, we've held four meetings in public out there. Two were actually on neighbors' properties, and two were on the subject site. We sent out notifications, bringing all, any and all people who wanted to come and kind of listen to what we were doing, hear their feedback, and really kind of taking into consideration as we move forward with the progression of the project. We've had multiple meetings with city council members yourselves outside the pre-application meeting, and again, the intent of those was, where are we at? Where are we going? And what are we doing to kind of better the city of Vista and really kind of be a good partner in this particular project? We've also did monthly newsletters. You'll see, we sent out about eight of them over a period of time, and these monthly newsletters kind of consisted of current status of where we're at, next steps going forward, thoughts that we were thinking about, and kind of just, again, it's another opportunity for us to engage and keep the community involved throughout. And on our distribution list, where we had appropriate emails, we had about 25 individuals on those email distributions, and we'd get feedback and follow-up kind of conversations with them once we would send those, send those emails as well. So, again, one of the things that we had set out that we felt we've accomplished is really engaging the community, really discussing where we think we have some pros and cons of our project, again, listening to opinions and trying to incorporate where we felt appropriate. Some kind of quick highlights, but what we see as being, I guess, I'll call them community benefits, is, you know, common area open space. The designation that we're seeking from a land use and a zoning doesn't require any open space. We do show about 15,800 square feet of common area open space to allow the residents to enjoy, or enjoy. I touched on the Vista Grande Drive and the dedication of that roadway. Like I said, right now, it's a very extremely deteriorated road, very challenging to go up even a small sedan, and so by the enhancement of that road and create some better capacity, again, it'll be useful for not only our benefits of our future residents, but are the homeowners, but also fire life safety as we extend and increase capacity to allow for such. On that same, in that same vein, with the way that our kind of site works, is we're going to be developing more northeasterly as well, and we kind of push out from our existing south property line about 750 feet to the northeast. And with this circulation, not only allows for better circulation for trucks and fire life safety, but also the water enhancement as well. So we'll be increasing capacity for water. We'll be adding fire hydrants throughout the development as well. And what this allows it to do is just, you know, right now, with the existing fallow site, this will increase the water infrastructure to allow fire to kind of better treat, protect, and serve from a, from a fire life safety point of view. Parking requirement that Chris had touched on, we, when we went to first planning commission, we felt we'd met the actual requirements for parking. These are going to be significantly larger homes. There are going to be large, long driveways. We're going to have at least a minimum three-car garage. And after listening with planning commission, we went back and kind of reconfigured some components of our site, planned an increase in what we'll call guest parking along the street to allow for a little bit more comfortability when guests do show up if they don't want to park in the driveways. Even though it allows for such, they'll have an ability to park in the street and to walk up to the resident that they may be seeing. The water quality and the stormwater, I touched on before, in current rain events right now, there's extreme erosion and deterioration that kind of flows down our project into some of the existing neighbors. We would be installing water quality measures to collect that water, to treat that water, to then store it over a period of time, and then to get it discharged over a period of time. And so what that does, obviously, is controls the flows. It controls the cleanliness of how that water is going to be then moved and discharged to the next stage. And again, it really stores it and keeps it. So we feel that with this development, it's taken the 17 acres right now that drains kind of very unclean and creates a lot of erosion, and it implements measures that are going to protect us from a safety, or, you know, from a, excuse me, cleanliness and ultimately a discharge point of view. The other current status of the project, kind of through our site, we have some overhead power lines, utility lines. As staff mentioned, one of our conditions is going to be to underground those power lines, which right now are definitely a fire hazard. We've seen, unfortunately, too many times recently where a pop transformer kind of creates a spark and then gets into existing brush, which is the perfect scenario of what we have currently going on there. And so by way of our development, we will be undergrounding those existing overhead utilities, which, again, provides for better safety, we think, and the longevity. Some of the comments that we received, too, throughout the course of our process, if you will, was, you know, Vista Grande Drive, as you make our turn, kind of coming up towards our development, some residents or other people have the ability to kind of go a little quick, and we recognize that. We received a letter and an email so much stating such, and our conditions of approval will put, add some additional signage as you're kind of coming up Vista Grande Drive to access our property to make sure that at least the signage is there to kind of slow down and make sure that everyone's taking, you know, care of who's there and the different safety from pedestrian or other cars as well. One of the things that we're really proud of with this project, and is one of the things that we had talked about very early on with especially council member Joe Green, who this is his district, is, you know, the public benefit. And again, we kind of felt the highlights that I just outlined were more kind of, I'll say, local or community level. And in regards to East Vista Way, this is, again, something we're very proud of because we talked about that intersection, the challenges we have both with current traffic as well as pedestrian safety. And as we were working through with city staff and determining what we can do, and we went through a whole traffic study and analysis that really didn't dictate us, our project having any additional burden to these intersections or streets. And being a good partner, a good neighbor, and a partner in this entire process, we said, hey, what is there that we can do? And we went out there with a traffic engineer and kind of took some assessments and looked at where some of the endpoints might be, where the safety concerns might be. And it came with this list of, hey, let's, let's have the applicant consider doing this type of improvement. And, you know, and kind of talking with city staff, it was, it was pretty laborious for a 25-lot subdivision, and there was conversation of, hey, maybe we can just do a new Luffy, and at some point, then the city can kind of collect funds over a period of time, get it programmed, get the additional financing, and come in and really do the improvement. And when we looked at it, we kind of coordinated and collaborated with the city. We really wanted to kind of put our mark here, and again, with the, with the goal of being a true good partner here, we committed the project on our own accord to make sure this, this actual improvement takes place. We work with city to make sure it was identified in our conditions of approval as a condition, make sure that we are the ones who do it, as opposed to wait for city to kind of come at some point in time as it goes through the programming process to actually take place. And what this improvement is, it's about 150 feet long, 20 feet wide of new pavement. We'll be... this improvement is, it's about 150 feet long, 20 feet wide of new pavement. We'll be adding curb gutter sidewalk landscaping. We'll be relocating existing signals to create for better widening at the intersections. We'll be enhancing existing access ramps for better pedestrian circulation. And what you'll see there, too, is we'll be putting crosswalks in across East Vista Way and Warmlands, which right now there aren't any. And so for those who've traveled on the road, it could be a busy road at times. And so with the widening, it will create better from a traffic circulation standpoint, with the enhancement of the access ramps and the and these pedestrian crosswalks, it's just going to create a better, more safe environment for the pedestrians. And so, again, this is something that we're very proud of. This did come on our own accord as far as conditioning the project ourselves to do it. But it's something that we saw as being important based on some of the feedback we got, not only from the neighbors when we met many times, but also several of you council members as well. To kind of summarize, again, we are very thankful here to be for the opportunity. I want to kind of reiterate, based on who we've met with and who we've talked with, both at the staff level, at the council level, the constituents and the stakeholders of the city of Vista, we feel we've presented what is a very balanced project. We feel we our development is going to enhance the infrastructure on the northeastern part of the city of Vista. It's going to provide for better accessibility for fire life safety. It's going to enhance the water capacity, and it's going to provide these potential residents, you know, good quality of life. And then again, in regards to the regional benefit, we feel strongly about what we're going to be doing, what we're committed to doing there at East Vista Way and Warmlands. And really appreciate your guys' time, and thank you so much. I appreciate any questions you might have.
Okay, do you want to, Councilmember Green, did you want to ask your question now? Okay, do you want to hear the speakers then? Okay. Okay, we'll start with Ursula Sack. And I'll call three of you, and if you'll kind of line up over here. So I'll call Ursula Sack, followed by Hayden Davis, followed by Alisa Williams-Davis.
Two minutes. Hi, I'm Ursula Sack. I'm with Guard. Good evening. It's really unfortunate that the city is is planning to approve this project by amending the general plan. I think that's a real terrible precedent. It opens the door for the extra high density development, particularly of the farmland, the 300 acre Strawberry Hill Farm. And that would be a real loss to Vista if that becomes an ocean of of concrete and subdivisions. But it would also be a loss to San Diego County. And it's also against the will of the constituents of this city. However, it sounds like you're going to go ahead with it. So we do had some requests, and one of them in terms of privacy and also neighborhood character is to have trees have a condition that there would be mature trees, 36 box sized trees, all the way along the eastern boundary, and also the southeastern boundary there along the Colby's driveway. And that would those would be mature, green, all year round trees. We also would like to ask that you go further than the planning commission did. Planning commission said that some of the higher houses should be should be one story houses. And we feel that the entire project should be one story houses because the houses around it are lower, and this is quite a high hill. And with two story houses, they could potentially be quite a bit higher, looking down upon the neighboring houses. If you're not willing to make that condition, at least we would ask that the southeast corner be designated as one story houses, because there are two houses that are right in that area that would be heavily badly affected if there were two story houses there. Lot the very lot in the corner lot 12 is problematic because it's so close, it would be built so close to the existing house. And my neighbors will talk about some concerns they have in terms of water drainage and sewage and so on.
Your time is up, Ursula.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, Hayden? You can come together to the mic. You talk for your.
Talk after me.
Yeah. That's fine. So you're Lisa. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. We'll call you.
I'm Alisa Williams-Davis.
Speak right speak right into the mic, right in the mic here. Yeah, it bends.
Is that good? I'm a shorty. Okay, first, a specific request is regarding the site grading. Grading of this site has the potential to compromise the wastewater treatment dispersal fields, i.e. the the leach lines with the lots that are adjacent to the project site. The environmental health specialist, Colleen Hines, in her report dated October 25th of 21, said such a compromise to the dispersal fields could result in daylighting sewage, literally in our backyards. She stated, and I quote, "To avoid this potential impact, the MMD should commit to consultations with the DHQ Land and Water Quality Division before any grading plans are approved." That's end of quote. So that's my specific request regarding the grading and the sewage issue. And now for my overarching request, my overarching concern is that the city council members have too easily accepted the the developers' submissions. And I really take issue with the one picture you showed Greg of the mattress, because you look at that hill from my home.
Excuse me, excuse me, you're talking to us up here.
Okay. Sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
During that January 18th Planning Commission meeting regarding the Vista Drive project, Commissioner Looney stated, quote, "I don't want it to become the problem we had with the Delpi Point development. Most of us in the surrounding community have repeatedly expressed our concerns about the elevation of the lots and how it affects our privacy. It disrupts the visual continuity of the hillsides and obstructs views." That same January 18th Planning Commission meeting, the commissioners commissioners expressed many of the same concerns I have and my neighbors have.
And your time is up. I'm sorry. I know.
Let me just say, this is our last chance to get it right. There will be development can.
Your husband can can help here. Hayden? Hayden Davis. Followed by Mariko, followed by Cipriano Vargas.
Hi. So I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to read the written comments that we've all submitted. But if you have, or when you when you do, you'll see that there are a really substantial number of concerns. I'm going to restrict myself to the concern about Lot 12. That's the lot that is directly closest to our where our house is directly east of that lot. And there's at least a couple of major concerns I have about that. One is that there is a earth boundary, a small hill sort of, that separates Lot 12 from our house. And there is no retaining wall or any sort of mechanism to support that wall. And I'm that that earth and barrier. And I'm concerned when Lot 12 is developed, and there is all the earth movement that goes on, that hill is going to be undermined. Over time, it will be eroded, and that could have a serious effect on the structural integrity of our foundation. That's one issue. The other issue has to do with water drainage. That's a pretty significant issue that is not addressed in the plan. And my my neighbor, Al Colby, will address that, I think, in more detail. And then finally, I would just also request that the the council get an objective outside analysis performed. The data that I've seen is mostly things that are coming directly from the developer and their engineers and their experts. So having an outside expert would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mariko? Is it Gifford or Grifford? Gifford? I couldn't tell for sure. And then followed by Cipriano Vargas, followed by Al Colby.
Thank you for letting me to address you tonight. Something came up at the planning commissioner that commissioners meeting that I think is really important, and that is some of the state laws that are already passed that increase density without local consent, right? It's just that's what happens at the state. And Commissioner Aguilar was the one who brought it to our attention. And so I went and looked, and there's AB 9, AB 10, AB 50, AB 290. It goes on and on. So the control of our density is no longer in our control. So this project has the possibility of not being just 25, but being 50 houses. And the impact of that being double of what you're seeing here with this MND. So that's a big concern because it's not being considered. And these houses might happen one at a time. So there's no cumulative impact being considered here. That's a very big concern. And it's for council, I can see it's disabling because you don't really have power of your own choices here. But for a community, we want to see the council be proactive in being able to protect those decisions in this kind of density by asking developers to place houses in a particular way that access could not be had. Otherwise, the single family zone will no longer exist. I do see that sometimes there's a conflict of interest when council members are develop are real estate agents. I know you always say that. They always do. But when these are your potential clients, there has to be a conflict because this is how you make your living. So that's always a concern I have whenever I see developers going in front of council members who are real estate agents. But the biggest concern, too, is is that we have a 20 we have a 2020 plan that citizens created together. And whenever there that's override, it is a disrespect to the citizens' effort. And it also, in the now coming up time that we have to do the next 2020, the next plan, citizens are less likely to participate when they've been disrespected. So I urge you just don't know.
Thank you. Sorry. Cipriano Vargas, followed by Al Colby.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cipriano Vargas, resident of Vista. I am concerned about this project. With and I'm speaking about this because as a council, you have had many discussions about homelessness. The developer talked about the benefit to the community. Well, how many current residents in our community are going to have access to these homes? Looking at the proposal with the, you know, million dollar homes. And so when we talk about how do we solve homelessness, making sure that we have access to providing people with a home. Currently, this proposal or program development fails to do that. Where is the benefit to the residents of the community of Vista? Like me and many of my peers who grew up in this community that love Vista, that want to make this their home, that want to have their children raised in our community, this leaves many of our residents out of this process, out of this community. And so when you look at proposals, when you look at projects coming before you, you as elected officials have that authority. You create that vision. You create the guidelines. So when I look at this project that fails to meet even with the sidewalks, that's great. But when we have an increased issue of homelessness, and I'm not saying that this project is going to solve and can solve homelessness, but it's not going to be a silver bullet, but an array of issues. So be proactive, listen to the residents. Let's make sure that we ask, what is the benefit to our community? Ask those questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Colby, followed Hatashi Watanabe.
Hello. I've talked to many of you lately. And John, actually, one of the questions that I came with was going to come with, John answered today, so I won't be talking about the water.
Will you pull your microphone up up high? Yeah, you're taller. There you go. Thank you.
I talked to John today, so I'm not going to be talking about the discharge, water discharge. But what I am concerned about, and I've talked to the developer, and I've talked to my neighbors, and I live on the southeast corner of the project, around 11, site number 11, 12, 23. And what I'm most concerned about is the new road coming down there on the east side of the of the project, that is going to the traffic coming southbound on the east side is going to be looking right into my driveway. And I've sent them the the console, some attachments with my add on package, and it shows a pretty clear picture of what the view is going to be. And what I would very much appreciate are, I see where there are trees on that corner, but on the other side, on the development side, I like I would really appreciate them being closer to my residence so that the oncoming traffic does not see that, see my home. I like to work with the development team to make sure that we both agree on the placement of those trees and the type of trees that we're getting. When I look at the grading plan, that grading plan, I see that it's going to be there's going to be very tight boundary between my my property and the development. And if there's any way that I was talking to, I talked to John about that with our meeting with Mayor Ritter, there's going to be something that probably will happen to my fence. And so if there's any way that we could work with the development team to figure out what's going to happen to the fence and where those trees would best be planted, I would sure appreciate that. And sure would appreciate if this could be part of the final development agreement that you guys voted on today. I know that a lot of what we talk about, we may not hear that there's going to be final agreement on, but I would sure appreciate hearing that we're going to get those trees. The other thing is, I'm done.
Yeah.
I got the trees.
Yeah, you have the trees. Thank you, sir. Hatashi?
Thank you for the time. So I have been a member of the Vista Grande neighbors for more than 10 years. And I purchased the property and been on the mortgage. And so that means that I've been on mortgage for more than 10 years. And starting about three years ago, I have been starting to be denied for the renewal of the homeowner's insurance. And reason is basically where my house sits. Basically, the recently, the higher fire hazardous level reclassification of the neighbor caused this problem. So looking at this project, I have the concern for the prospective new homeowners who may face the similar challenge that I have been having for the past three years. So I assume that a good chunk of the new prospective homeowners will be on a mortgage. And as a requirement, they have to maintain homeowner's insurance with fire insurance included for the duration of the mortgage, which is many, many years. So I sincerely request the planning to include this serious study of how local insurance industry will insure the new property here. That's the concern that I have, not just for myself, but for the new homeowners. Unless the target of the new homeowners are those who can pay cash out of pocket, million dollar, which I believe would not be the main target of the city. So I strongly request the city to consider industry survey study, how well the new property will be insured. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bob Garrison.
Hello, everyone. Bob Garrison, partner with Greg Perrine on this project, and thanks for your time and thanks for your attention on this matter. I was just wanted to respond real quickly on the density issue. This was brought up in the planning commission meeting. And the thought at that time was with SB 9, which is what we're talking about, what was being discussed at that time by the planning commissioner, what the concern was is maybe we should plot our homes or have the homes plotted in such a way that there couldn't be access to get an additional accessory unit or an additional home on there and allow a split of the lot. We did a lot of research on that. And Senator Tony Atkins authored or went through a whole process of understanding what would be the case? Would this actually occur in a A2A or, just a second, common interest development, which is what we have? We have an HOA common interest development. It's not applicable to that type of a project. So that law or SB 9 does not apply. So that concern, we actually addressed that and discussed that with the planning commissioners. So that concern, I think, is is not there. It does not exist. The other thing I wanted to say is, again, thank you very much. I think we've met with all of you a few times and appreciated that time. And also, I also appreciate all the neighbors that we've met with over the time. We've had many, many meetings and, as Greg has mentioned, newsletters that we've put out. We've been listening. We've addressed as many of the concerns as absolutely possible and did the work down there at the intersection that we've talked about. So again, thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. That he's the last of our speakers. So I'll turn it back to council here. And Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you for everybody who came and spoke today. I have met with a lot of neighbors over there. I've walked this site four times, met with the developer a few times, and attended three or four community meetings in the neighborhood, one on New Year's Eve for about two hours with all of you folks. Nice to see you again. My first question I had even before they spoke was, the recommendations that were added of as conditions of the approval from the planning commission, are those included in your recommendations of staff approval as far as our resolutions? Yeah. Okay. And then the signage for speed that they spoke about around the corner, I didn't see that in here added. Is that already added in the conditional approval as well? Okay. And then one big concern that's come up, I heard so many people talk about the southeast corner and lots 11, 12, and 23, as far as like a tree barrier between the properties. Is it possible to add a condition for mature? is it possible to add a condition for mature trees in the area? Perfect. And then one of the residents, I didn't write down the name, spoke about Lot 12 and the earth barrier between the grading, between Lot 12 and his property, and the fact that the, you know, geological shifting, I guess, could impede the integrity of his foundation. We're going to have a solid engineering report and things like that to make sure there's no effects on surrounding properties, foundations and things, I would assume?
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to be a detailed soils report and final grading plan to show the compaction and the cutting in of the slope and the keying. All of that will be required.
Okay, and let's just go with the what-if scenario. I know we don't like to do that, but say in five years, there's a focused impact and there's a cracked slab that occurred because of the soil movement through this property, is there any recourse that a property owner would have? Or is that kind of like, hey, good luck, man. I see a smile in, is that a?
If the property owner can prove that it's a result of the adjacent development, then they have a claim against the adjacent owner of the lot.
Okay. So we basically provide documentation saying it's not going to happen. If it does, they would have to prove?
We would have all the documentation to support the property owner's claim in that case that the lot was properly graded and the slopes were keyed in accordingly.
Okay. And then there was, during your presentation, you guys said the current NAGDEC report is good and we don't need a new one?
Based on the fact that they've changed the plan from 28 lots to 25 lots.
It's not that big of a change from?
There's no new impacts identified.
Okay. All right. And let me just make sure I don't have any other notes here. I definitely want to hear from my council members. I do want to say one thing about this developer is that this was the first thing I ever voted on as a council member in 2017. We changed the general plan and we annexed this property into the city of Vista. And I was one of the no votes initially because I was so worried about this being a bridge to the strawberry fields and them immediately building out the strawberry fields and this huge development. I was a very young council member at that point in time, and I didn't really realize what the, you know, process was for development. And I feel like after I've looked into this lot more and looked into this project more, that this isn't just a land bridge. This is actually going to be a good, a good development for the community. By changing these lots and getting the, you know, lot sizes down and positioning the homes away from the surrounding neighbors and things, I really feel like you listened to the neighbors over there. And by building 25 houses and doing all of these road improvements, when you come into the city from Gopher Canyon Road up Vista Way to Warmlands right there where that Shell Station is, it's been an eyesore for years. There's no way for pedestrians to walk around, no crosswalks. It's, it's, it's a real, you know, bad situation. We're still working on the Shell owner over there. Neighbors, hard press on the Shell owner. They're in a lawsuit with the previous owner. We'll talk about that later. However, this project has made a lot of progress for that, for that community. The only way we get development, we get benefits for communities like new roads and new sidewalks and new lights and walkways are for developers to pay for them. The drainage in this area right now is just going right into the homes below it. With the new grading plans, new street curbs and gutters, it's actually going to help the runoff not go into the properties that are right below it. I actually attended two community meetings in a couple of those properties that sit right below the development, and they were pretty excited about it. They also spoke with the developer about running sewer real close to their property so it's easy for them to tie in should they want to. I know we said that they can't actually stub, like provide a stub because then you could, you know, tie into it yourself, but right at the end of that property, the adjacent neighbors are going to have a really close opportunity to tie into sewer as well. These are not affordable homes, and they're not apartments, and they're not homes that young families can afford. These are going to be homes on a half acre that are going to be, you know, 2,500, 3,000 square foot for, you know, three-car garages for, for big families. And we are providing affordable opportunities in our city, but I think that even the neighbors in the community there would agree that this isn't a good spot for affordable housing and, you know, a starter community for the city of Vista. This isn't a state community. These are estate homes. We need to maintain control here locally, and we need to make sure that the aesthetics of the community fit the community. I feel like the changes that are made with this project will benefit this community, and I'm really going to hold the developer's feet to the fire from start to finish. This is a developer that's staying with the project until it's completed. So we'll really be able to make sure that all of the conditions added to the approval are followed through with. Now, when all is said and done, these 25 units are going to be a huge benefit to that northside community of Vista over there. So I, for one, do support this project with the recommendations of the planning commission and also the comments from the surrounding community members with the mature landscaping and tree barriers. I like the layout of the properties up top set off from the east side properties that we spoke about at the meeting, but I really think you did a lot of work sending out newsletters. It's, it's really good doing this community engagement, and this is why we do this and why we took two years to get to the public hearing, is to make sure that we were providing something that had a tangible benefit for the community. For the record, I have never sold a home that I have ever approved in a development in the city of Vista. I've never made a penny off selling a home that was ever developed by a developer. So I don't, I don't tell them, check my record. I've owned a real estate company since 1997 in the city of Vista, and I love my job and I love what I know about real estate. It helps me make good decisions on properties and on land use for my city. And land use is one of the biggest decisions I make as a council member. So being able to read setbacks and property lines and square footages and drainage plans, you name it, it's a good thing. Thank you so much for coming tonight, community.
Councilmember Contreras.
I do want to thank the developer for all the improvements and the commitment to meeting with neighbors and taking into account some of the infrastructure needs that the city has not addressed. You know, I actually disagree. I think that the city does have the responsibility of building infrastructure. It can't simply be put on the developer. And when that is the case, we have a lot of gaps in our community, and that's something that you see here in the city of Vista. I do also have a comment regarding this picture of trash. This reminds me of some vacant properties that I have in my district. And I think that as a, it's a responsibility of the property owner, whoever that is, to maintain the property in a clean manner. And perhaps that's something that, you know, the city should be able to enforce a little bit better because I know that anybody who lives here in Vista has seen that this is a problem. And we've talked many times about litter being an issue, but I did just want to say that I think that's more of a reflection on the property owner. And, you know, it, I know it's difficult when there's vacant land. However, it is part of the responsibility. I also want to speak to the fire accessibility issues. You know, the way that this land is currently zoned is such that there wouldn't be a high density in this area, negating the, the issue of there being inadequate fire access. However, with increasing the density in an area where we know that there's a high fire risk and that fire risk continues to increase on an almost daily basis, I mean, we're in, in February right now, and we have had really hot days. I'm actually very concerned of, about summer time and how hot it could possibly get. So, you know, when you compare the fire hazard of chaparral or any kind of native vegetation versus the fire hazard of constructed homes, there's a big difference in the way that these things burn up. And, you know, the issues, a lot of the issues with fires have to do with the carcinogens and things that, in homes that burn. So that's, that's a big issue. But like I said, I mean, there are some benefits that the public would be getting with this development. I don't necessarily know if those benefits outweigh some of the hazards of putting a denser development in this area. And I do want to speak a little bit to the issue of density and looking at state law as a reason to move certain projects because they have a smaller footprint than what, you know, we think might happen in the future. So this is more a question for staff. Currently, with the zoning that we have, how many structures are permitted on this, this piece of property?
There is a map right now for 14 single-family lots.
And the 14 single-family lots, that was what was applied for in 2017, correct?
Correct.
At that point, is it, was it only at 14 because that was the indication of what this property was going to be used for? Or, or is it that there wasn't the ability to say, hey, I want to put 28 or 25 homes? Did the, does the application process allow one to say, I want to increase density or?
The applicant always has the option of requesting increased density. At the time that they annexed, the city's policy was and still is that annexation should be taken in at no greater density than one unit to the acre.
So, you know, this is a problem that a lot of residents here in Vista have because, you know, and I'm really thankful that we have an early design review and that we have a planning commission that pays really close attention to details. And we have residents that pay really close, really close attention to details. But, you know, one of the issues that we've had and continue to have here in the city of Vista is that if you're able to bring together enough capital to purchase property, regardless of if the zoning allows for you to have a higher density, more often than not, when that property is brought forth to the council for review for increased density, most of the time, those applications go through. And, and I think there's a real rift happening with our residents here in Vista where, you know, they want to see a little bit more commitment to our general plan. There, it's there for a reason. There's a lot of studying and reports and public input that goes into them. And, you know, I mean, we're due for reviewing and possibly changing our general plan. And I think that it's really important, not every development, you know, needs to go forward. We don't have an issue where, you know, we need more one acre, three-quarters of an acre, you know, half-acre estates here in Vista. We do have an affordability crisis. So, you know, just taking a look at the historical record, you know, in 2017, the application was for 14 homes. It would be one acre, one acre lots, single family. And now, you know, there's been a lot of conversation with the neighbors. The developer has done a great job of trying to bring together a project that has public benefit. But, you know, and we have different opinions up here. We have different ways of looking at it, and I'm not going to say one is better than the other, but the way that I am looking at this is, does the public benefit outweigh the possible risks of increased density in an area that isn't built for this type of density? And I, I'm having a hard time, you know, weighing these two because I just don't see that the benefit is high enough for the public, not at this time. We have made a lot of progress, but, you know, even being able to reduce the amount of density from 25 to less, I think would be an improvement. You know, making sure that there's, I know it can be said that if you have three-quarters of an acre or half acre, that, you know, that's enough green space, but I don't necessarily know if that is accurate. I think that, you know, some of the, the green space in this project can't really be utilized as active green space because it is, you know, something that the state requires, which is the drainage basin. So I would like to see an increase in green space in this project. So, you know, that's all I have to say at this time. I do really appreciate the, the proposal and the amount of time that has gone into reviewing it, deliberating it, expanding it to ensure that there's more pedestrian-friendly urban assets. But at the same time, we still have some conditions on this particular area of Vista that are really worrisome. You know, the lilac fire, I'll never forget that. If the winds hadn't changed, it could have came right into the city. So we know Gopher Canyon gets on fire a lot. This is a fire channel. You know, luckily, the state was able to give us some money for our, to redo our fire station off Taylor and East Vista Way, but we can't continue to stretch and sprawl. That really takes your taxpayer money and spreads it so thin that we're not able to to actually address the infrastructure needs that we have when we increase density. So these are all really big issues. I, I want to hear from the rest of my colleagues. I know I've taken the floor now probably for six hours, so, but I do thank everybody that's been part of this process. And I do want to thank the developer for keeping in mind some of the gaps that we have in our infrastructure and putting that forward for us to consider as part of this project.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much to the residents and the neighbors who played an active role working with the developer. Your comments have helped us to understand what improvements would make this more palatable for you and would improve the neighborhood that you live in. In terms of the public benefit, Mr. Conley, the length of Vista Grande Drive being approved before the annexation was entirely in the county, was it not?
The portion that is within the project site, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this blue line here and observing that the black line at the southern edge of the property, that's Vista Grande. So it was outside of the area of the city of Vista before the annexation. The point being that at no time without the annexation would the, would the city have ever been spending money in the county to improve that road. So that is one benefit that the city would not have had on an agenda to improve. So I think it's important to, you know, to note that there's an improvement to what was a county road that comes from this project. It sounds like you may have addressed Mr. Colby's concern about standing water and there won't be any standing water in the retaining basin. That was an important point. Are you on board with the mature trees at the property line? Is that, that seems reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would support that recommendation.
You come to the microphone, please.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Conley, the issue with the fire insurance, do we know anything? Or there's going to be additional fire studies here? We've, we've got all we're going to get?
There are hundreds of properties in Vista that are within the very high fire hazard zone. So if they're not going to be able to obtain insurance, it's going to be a problem not only for this project, but for hundreds of residents, so.
What do we understand about this, the subject property and its inclusion in a?
It is in a, I believe it's not the very high, it's the high fire hazard severity zone. So it is within a zone designated by CAL FIRE, and that could affect insurance rates, but it's not impossible to get insurance. You just pay a higher premium generally.
Does the development, including the streets which make fire breaks and the installation of hydrants and the installation of irrigation, does that tend to change the, the fire severity designation?
The state reviews those on a regular basis, but I'm not a fire hazard expert. We could call our chief down if you want him to provide some input on that.
If someone's got a brief thought on that?
Yeah, sorry. I mean, my opinion, talking to certain individuals, both the fire and the insurance world, I'm not an insurance agent by any means, but I think with the enhanced infrastructure capacity and with the new homes that are to be built, which will all be fire sprinklered, and again, those fire breaks that you mentioned, I think it's going to lend itself to actually having probably a little bit ease, a little bit easier to get homeowner's insurance for not only us, but probably the adjacent existing residents as well because of the enhanced capacity of infrastructure as well as the homes being fire sprinkled.
What do you make of the? What do you make of the concern that was raised about sewage, daylighting? Is that a concern that you've examined?
Absolutely is. We did very early on, it was discussed at Planning Commission, but well prior to that, our civil engineer at Engage Department of Environmental Health, we looked at that particular area where the leach fields were. And we are right now, based on kind of concurrence with them and with city staff as well, we have the proper setbacks that will not affect any existing leach lines on adjacent properties whatsoever.
Okay.
And that's been confirmed by our civil engineer and in conversation with the County Department of Health.
And we're just learning about AB 9 and AB 10. Foley, you're better read on it, Mr. Conley, than I am. But the common interest development is exempt from those new state laws that allow for the property owners to have greater density?
The current state law does not apply to homeowners' association-controlled, common interest developments like what's proposed here at this time.
Our common interest development, is that, that's a minority of the homeowners' association?
Homeowners' association-controlled developments. In other words, the full association of this development.
Is that CID model? Is that a, because what I, is that a rare model or a newer model?
It's a standard model.
That's the standard, okay. Because what I was understanding was that most of our HOAs were going to be impacted by AB 9 and AB 10?
No. The current law doesn't affect homeowners' association-controlled developments.
I appreciate that clarification. And then we talked about liability of the impact of some soil movement. And you said it would be the lot owner? Would it be the lot owner or would it be the developer?
City and the civil engineer are responsible for the grading plan and the compaction and meeting the standards thereof. But following the completion of grading and the construction of a home, yeah, it's the lot owner that's responsible for any drainage or slope issues.
Okay. Well, generally speaking, I mean, I think there's some concerns here that, you know, our concerns, and anytime we have a development, there are these types of concerns. And I, you know, I have to trust the engineers that build these things. I'm not an engineer. But it does sound like the concerns have been addressed and understood, investigated. You know, what, one of the things that I discussed with the guard group is, you know, when we made this annexation and saw the map for 14 properties, it's been three and a half years now, and there was no interest economically in developing these 14 one-acre estates. And so I think one of the concerns that the adjacent community should have, and if you can read carefully between the lines you heard this evening, there are those that would advocate for an even greater density here. And so I think it's a concern that there be a development that is amenable to the neighbors that is approved. And, you know, it could potentially be an alternative in the long run to something that you might like much less. And so I think when you've got a developer that's worked with the community to address some of these issues that you've brought up, I think it's important to work toward a compromise. I've had numerous meetings with the residents and the developer. I've heard and considered all the issues as I understand them. And I support the amendment. And in fact, I would offer a motion to accept the proposal and offer the general plan amendment as proposed.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And thank you to the residents and community members that came out tonight to share your concerns. And I did receive all of your correspondence and definitely kind of capture the imagination of your concerns about this project. So I really appreciate that and your attentiveness to it because it has been a very long time coming. And I appreciate my fellow council members and our city staff for working so diligently as well as the developer for continuing to go back to the drawing board and adapt and adapt their plans to fit the community's needs, to fit the direction that has been given, not only at the Planning Commission level, but even here tonight. So I know that many of my fellow council members do like to see us be unanimous on decisions and be, you know, all kind of one unit and unity for a decision. And I just want to say that even if it is, right, split, or if there's a difference of opinions amongst our council, that there's still a value in us having this conversation because as we've seen from the discussion tonight, developments like this bring up a lot of concerns in the community. Obviously, it brings up concerns of infrastructure, which is why there's, you know, very impressive improvement being made around Warmlands. And I know that the developer is not necessarily in the business of making big infrastructure improvements to space that doesn't even touch your property. So that, you know, is a very clear public benefit. But right off the bat, I do want to say that it does concern me as a council member, as a representative of District 3, that our process to complete or anticipate improving infrastructure in this way is not sustainable. It is not for the ultimate community benefit, which is having equitable communities with infrastructure that everyone can access. It's a patchwork solution. And I think that it's a great effort from our developer applicant here to show, hey, we're such good neighbors that we're going to put this as a priority. You know, I hope that you continue to have that same attitude when it comes to some of the other concerns. And just know that that is obviously a very, very huge improvement that shouldn't be taken lightly, but it is something that I look at with, you know, at a city level with a little bit of scrutiny and concern, that we need to be ensuring that we have plans to make some of these improvements. Even if we are concerned about the funding or if we are concerned about the feasibility of completing infrastructure improvements, that as a body, we need to be actively looking to make those improvements in an equitable way. But in regards to the actual project on the property there, I think that a lot of the concerns regarding fire safety, regarding density are very important conversations. It's good to know that an HOA community is exempt from some of the state's requirements for upzoning and higher density. Maybe I am, you know, a rare breed, but I'm actually not against density. I think if we can save as much of our soil as we can, it could be an even greater benefit. So I'm not afraid of tall, tall buildings if it means that we can have a little bit more of our soil and our agricultural lands retained. So in my imagination, in my world, we could just as likely, just as easily have a 25-story building with apartment units in it with, you know, a big, beautiful open space available. So I think that this is a unique project, and that's why you're coming forward and making these requests for a general plan amendment and a zone changes because it is a unique project with, you know, a unique type of housing to offer to the community. It's certainly high-quality, upper-class homes for people that are able to accomplish paying that price. And that is another thing to consider as well. I do not question the quality of the potential homes. I just know that there is a a, excuse me. There's a large divide in our community between those who, you know, whether you grew up here or not, or you're from Vista, or you moved to Vista later on in life. This is a very resilient community, and a lot of folks here have had to fight really hard to call Vista their home. And I see this project is also trying to do that, right? Really trying to make a home here in Vista. So I don't question the integrity or the quality of the homes by any means. It's just a matter of what is appropriate for our community and answering some of the questions that I have. One of my questions is, especially because this is currently agricultural zoning, as a council, what are our goals in regards to open space? Right? If this space is going to change, and we suppose it'll change, then what are our future goals? What do we do in regards to future changes? Right? Do we have an interest in conserving our open space? Or are we more interested in developing our open space? So I think that those are really important questions. I think I know where I stand with them personally, but I think as a body, it's part of the topic that comes up. I do want to recognize some of the concerns that the neighbors had, specifically the mature trees. I think that that would provide privacy, not only for the potential new residents, but also for the existing residents. And also the reduction of stories. So I heard the comment today about Delpy's Corner. And, you know, regardless of the quality of the homes, I think the aesthetic of the entire hillside there is something to consider. And having, you know, kind of homes stacked on top of each other, you know, with those retaining walls, as beautiful as the homes themselves are, it can really take away from the aesthetics and the natural beauty of the surrounding area to have density displayed that way. So that is, you know, one of my concerns is perhaps make them all one-story, and that could even be more contiguous with the neighborhood in general. And then there was also the concern about the open space, right? As well as creating more barriers between the potential homes and the current neighbors. So there was recommendations from the residents regarding potentially even reducing the amount of lots, which originally was 14 and now is being recommended for 25, to perhaps 24 lots and considering removing Lot 12 or reorienting Lot 12 so that there is more opportunity for open space along that neighborhood line. I understand that there is a need for privacy, but I also think a lot of the neighbors would like it to be an integrated space where maybe there can be kind of neighborhood sharing of that open space, right? Perhaps a walking trail along the western side where those mature trees could be planted. So I think that the recommendations from the residents actually do a lot to preserve and to conserve those open spaces that this zoning is meant to protect. And if we could implement those changes, I think it would be highly beneficial. So perhaps I'll take a moment to just check in with our city manager and city attorney to see if I were to second Deputy Mayor Franklin's motion and add amendments of the recommendations from the residents, would that be permissible and allowed to come before us for a vote?
It would be if Deputy Mayor Franklin were to accept the amendments as part of his motion.
Sure. So I have them written here. This is, there's three major points that I captured from the residents. So that was the mature trees on the west side. If we can amend staff's recommendation to include the mature trees as well as the reduction to one-story homes. And lastly, the reorientation of that lower corner lot, which is Lot 12, to ultimately be 24 lots instead of 25. So that's, you know, taking in everything that I heard from the residents, considering the fact that once this is paved, you can't go back. You don't get to get that soil back ever, you know, in our lifetime feasibly. So everything that we can do to conserve and protect that natural space and integrate the neighborhood into a lovely cohesive aesthetic in our beautiful Vista Hills, I think I would be very supportive of. But I would love to hear what Deputy Mayor Franklin has to say regarding those updates.
Wait, what?
He said he wanted to wait for his turn. I don't know, do you want to respond to her amendment or?
Yeah, I believe there are other folks that want to speak. So perhaps I'll leave it at that, and if it comes back around, we can discuss it further.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Green, sorry.
No problem. All right, thank you so much. So I do want to say, you guys keep talking about density and density and density and how, you know, you don't mind a 25-story building, but we don't want to densify this area. I want to make sure, you know, over the last five years since this was annexed, we've had tons of meetings. I actually live in this area right off of Warmlands and Foothill Drive. I am your neighbor. I drive by that Shell Station like every day as well. And this is conducive to the aesthetics of the community. A half-acre lot is over 21,000 square feet, like 22,100 and something square feet, which if you, all the lots in District 3 and in District 1 and in District 4, there's probably almost zero half-acre lots in those areas because they're all like 4,500 square feet, 500 square feet, 7,500 square feet. It's a really big lot in some of these areas. And to have a 22,000-square-foot lot is a half acre. I live on a third-acre lot off of Foothill Drive, and it's a very large lot with different areas for a garden and turf and a basketball court. And it's a really big lot. So I want to make sure that you grasp the concept of 22,000 square feet and a half acre being a really nice estate home and a state-sized lot. I feel like the plan the developers put forth and the amendments that they've made as to stories were really, you know, good and well-thought-out as far as the neighboring communities. I would second Councilmember Franklin's motion as is. I think that it is a great motion. We are adding the trees to that motion to make sure that they are, you know, definitely mature and that they are conducive for the privacy. However, I feel like this isn't a heavy-density project. 24 homes on a half-acre that are beautifully graded. The fire hazard thing you speak about, the first question that an insurance agent asks you, and I only know this because I'm a real estate agent and I've sold like 1,000 houses over the last 30 years, is where's the closest fire hydrant? And I don't know how close the closest fire hydrant is to you right now, but I know there's two new fire hydrants going in there and a city sewer and a city water system. And I would venture to say, if your property is closer to this, it's going to have better access, you know, to water to put out fires. So this particular project could actually hypothetically be better for fire. There's also two separate accesses for fire to come in and also an alternative access for neighbors in the community to now get through that community to access in the event there's a fire on that side. So I've spent so many hours and so much time on this particular project, and I've seen the concessions that you've made. The single-acre or one-acre 14-unit, there wasn't a huge demand for that, and that's why it wasn't built. Right now, if you look in San Diego County, there's about 2,000 houses available total in the entire county. And if you're looking for a half-acre house, good luck, find one. There's not a whole lot of them, you know? Right now, there is a big need for housing and the, you know, the governor of our state wants us to make more units. And that's why S B and 9 and 10 are here so they can densify. I believe what Councilmember Franklin said is pretty true, is that we have a great development right here. We do have a council with a lot of different opinions, and our opinions together form these amazing projects. And if we can approve this project and get this project moved forward for you as a palatable project, it's safe for your community, it's a safe project, and it could be better than what could come down the pipe in the future. And what we've seen in the past wasn't built. This is a developer committed to building and committed to benefiting the community. In my opinion, this is the type of builder that we want coming to our community. I also want to address the patchwork as far as infrastructure goes. Developers do help with patchwork, and thank you, developers. As a city council and as a city government, we have CIP projects, capital improvement projects, we have a general fund, we allocate funding for improvements. We also work with our elected officials. Karina Contreras worked with the city member Horvath to get us some good money for a well and a fire station. I just recently filmed a bunch of videos with Congressman Levin throughout our community because we need sidewalks, we need our utilities undergrounded, we need wider roads, we need better access to the streets from our off-ramps. When you're getting off the freeways, there's a lot of things that we do, but there's also things developers help us with. And this is a developer that's going above and beyond to help us. Absolutely, this is on the county line, and we wouldn't have done projects in the past. So now that you're coming to the city, bienvenidos de Vista. We will take good care of you and make sure your roads are good, your sewer is good. And you can come voice your concerns to us in the council anytime, once you're in our city. So I second Councilmember Franklin's motion. I think this is a great project. I think a half-acre is great. It's actually attached to a lot of other half-acre properties, literally landlocked to an entire half-acre community. I think this is exactly what this community should have, and I think keeping it as an improved improved lot is a disservice to that particular community and that this is going to be a benefit. Thank you.
I'm also, I'm going to jump in here. I'm also going to support this project. I've met with him many times, and just so you know, I've been a realtor for 20 years, and I've sold one house in a project that we, but I, and it was one that I didn't vote on, it was years ago, but we, realtors don't, don't sell, this is not why we're making this project. I think it's a good, a good project for the city. We have a housing shortage in this county, well, actually the state, but the state has given us numbers to build. They're called the regional housing numbers, arena numbers. And the, they want us to build the market-rate housing as well as affordable housing, and so we're working on affordable housing. We have some projects for that, but we also need to build market-rate housing, and that's what this is. And let me tell you, I could sell a single-story house all day long. That they're needed, and there are no houses for sale hardly, and especially on those on half-acre lots. So I'm going to support this project. And just one other thing, you know, we talked about the general plan. Our general plan is probably about 20 years old right now, and it's ready to be updated. And things have changed in 20 years, and Vista has changed in 20 years. And so sometimes we have to, you know, we, you know, we're busting at the seam sometimes, and we have to expand our borderlines. So I would have just wanted to add that. And so I will go on to Councilmember Contreras. It looks like I'm going to go around again here.
Councilmember Melendez, I think, made some really important suggestions to improve the motion on the floor. I understand that there is now a second for the other motion. So I just wanted to ask the city attorney, you know, I'm in favor of Councilmember Melendez's amendments and would second that motion. Do we get to vote on that motion?
That motion was a second, offered as a second to Deputy Mayor Franklin's motion, and it has not been accepted. And the main motion has been seconded by Councilmember Green. So at this moment, if you wish to incorporate those, the appropriate mechanism would be a substitute motion incorporating those changes, which then might be seconded, and then the vote would be on the substitute motion first, and depending on what happens to the substitute motion, a vote on the main motion.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. You know, I'm further from what it seems like everybody on this council to approving this zone change. However, seeing as how this discussion has moved forward, I think it's really important. You know, we had recently a meeting with residents at Madigal, and the developer did a great job creating a bridge, and, you know, we had people coming forward who were really opposed to the project, saying, hey, you know, what we want it. And as a council, we were very elated that that process had occurred. So I do offer a substitute motion, which includes the amendments to the motion that Councilmember Melendez put forward. And I also just want clarification because, you know, a lot of the comments are, hey, if we don't accept this, then we could be looking at higher density in the future. What is the likelihood that at its current zoning, we would see this project come forward at a much higher density?
The way things are going right now, honestly, it could be the next project in the door. There's a lot of requests for increased density. However, that said, the proposals will all come to the city council for discussion right out of the gate, so you would have the opportunity to direct that wherever you want it.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that's on the public record because I don't want to use fear-mongering in any kind of way, and that might be too strong of a word for what's happening here. But I just want to make sure that we have an understanding that the discretion lies with this body, and we would be able to have that conversation. But in any case, I do put the substitute motion forward, and that's it. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you. You know, I think that the accommodation to plant the trees on top of the many accommodations that the planning commission has placed upon the project and that the developer has agreed to are sufficient. I think when we have a developer that works in good faith with us, we want to try and work in good faith with them. You know, maybe I'm confused, but what I seem to hear is that there are those who would prefer a much greater density, and perhaps the project would be more in line with their priorities if it was an extremely dense development. And I don't think it's fear-mongering because I'm just interpreting the comments and because maybe some of the comments weren't direct enough to events their ultimate motives. I'm hearing clearly, and again, maybe I'm misinterpreting, but I'm hearing clearly that there's probably those in our polity who would favor a much greater project, perhaps a dense apartment building project. You know, the idea was raised, you know? So I don't think it's ridiculous, and I don't think it's fear-mongering. I think if all of us are honest about what our priorities for new projects are, I think the community might have a better understanding of what the real choices before us are. I'm not afraid, to be honest, about my priorities. I believe that it's our obligation to provide for a mixture of different densities. I believe in some places, like in the city center and near our transit lines, I think density makes sense, high density. And in other places, I think, you know, this kind of a development is very much in keeping with the character of our community and provides a housing product that, as Councilman Green said, is for large families that need a little bit of extra space, and they're willing to make the sacrifice to afford it. And so I think it's a good project. I think we've asked for and received a lot of concessions, and so I think I'm going to stick with my motion as amended with the trees. So, thank you.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to just say thank you, all of you, for the discussion, and to clarify that for me, my priorities are not high-density housing in this area or high-class housing in this area, but to protect the general plan and to respect the concerns of residents and to protect our soil and our limited agricultural land. Those are my two priorities. And although I appreciate you, Councilmember Contreras, I see the political reality that, you know, is currently before us, that is, you know, not likely to be able to receive many changes and accommodations. But I do want to clarify something with our city attorney. I believe, I believe the original motion that Deputy Mayor Franklin made was to accept staff's recommendation as it is. However, was there an addition of adding the tree lining to the west side?
My understanding is that, yes, there was, that he had indicated with Mr. Conley that that would be added to the conditions. If I'm mistaken, he can certainly.
That is my motion.
Okay. So the motion second on the floor is the current plans plus the addition of trees on the west side.
Can I clarify?
The east side. I apologize, the east side.
Can I clarify for the record what the motion we think should be?
Thank you.
That 36-inch box evergreen trees be planted along the eastern boundary of the project site and along the Colby parcel northern boundary.
That sounds like exactly what I intended.
Mr. Conley, and those trees, those are mature trees, and how do we define that?
A 36-inch box is the size of the tree.
Okay. Thank you so much for that update. Just wanted to clarify that that is the current motion on the floor. Thanks.
Okay, so it goes to, are you, anymore? Councilmember Melendez? No. Councilmember Contreras then.
I just wanted to clarify that I am not in favor of high density in this area. I just simply wanted to have for the public record the correct process by which we increase density in this type of area. You know, even though there's a bus line that goes through there, I think it would be laughable to consider this as a transit-oriented area. You know, I took the bus once to the Elks Lodge for Rising Star, and it was really interesting, and I couldn't get back. So, you know, I've been doing some auditing of our public transit, and it hasn't been going so good. So, and as your representative on North County Transit District, I'm trying to figure out how to do that. And I wanted to say, I really wanted to add to the list that Councilmember Green said when he was filming videos with our Congressman Mike Levin. I was able to be part of that video as well, and I didn't want to leave out the fact that we need to have grade separation for the Sprinter, which means that it'd be good for the Sprinter to go underground at Vista Village because it is a nightmare there. And so if it went underground there, it would be a lot better. Same thing at Civic Center, but.
Okay, we need to vote on this motion. We got a long way to go.
So, yeah, so anyways, I just wanted to clarify my comments on density, just in case they weren't clear, but I'm ready to vote. Thanks.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes with two noes. Okay, so that moves us on to our discussion items, and we have two discussion items this evening. The first one is a small lot residential development requirements. Our community development director, John Conley, is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Our staff's been working on some proposed regulations addressing small lot subdivisions, and Ms. Chow has put together the staff report, so she's going to be making the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, councilmembers. Patty Chow, deputy director in community development, city planner. Pleased to be here this evening to present to you this discussion item on small lot residential development requirements. Just to give you a little bit of a quick background on this topic, during the past several years, that's been a significant interest, an increase in small lot, single-family residential development as another tool in the toolbox in order to promote homeownership, owner-occupied housing opportunities for individuals, families, households that are trying to buy a home in Vista. Our current code does not allow for small lot development below the 6,000-square-foot lot size. And so in the meantime, what developers have been doing is that they've been proposing and building detached owner-occupied condominium units with a common underlying ownership under a condominium map structure. So typically, you're going to see those detached condos where the individuals, families, households, they own the particular unit, the interior of it, but they share common ownership as far as common areas and the actual land. So that's the basic difference right there. So staff researched several cities in the region that have small lot requirements or have had them for quite a long time so that we can actually develop our own regulations. So the proposed regulations from the staff's perspective is that we would recommend the small lot to be within the R1B and the RM zones up to 15 dwelling units per acre. And that is because the small lot regulations would actually end up resembling a lot of those current regs that are in those zones. So we're not trying to completely recreate things, but we're trying to utilize what we have already in our toolbox, but make it more specific for small lots. We don't recommend introducing these new requirements in lower-density zones, semi-rural, rural areas, because obviously it would create a conflict with surrounding neighborhoods, and we don't want to create a conflict as far as consistency with what surrounding areas already offer. And we also conversely don't recommend introducing them in the higher-density zones that are above 15 dwelling units per acre because then we have this possibility jeopardizing our abilities to introduce higher-density projects in order to meet our arena for a regional housing needs assessment in our housing element. So the minimum lot size that we are proposing is at 3,600 square feet, minimum lot width at 45 feet. In a cul-de-sac situation, the minimum width would be 20 feet. And obviously, we have sidewalks with six-foot landscape parkways on both sides of the street to preserve the streetscape. And also important is parking, to have on-street parking that would be required on both sides of the street, whether it's public or private, so that we have that minimum curb-to-curb width of 40 feet that would not only accommodate fire access, but also parking on both sides. And that's pretty important as discussions on parking goes. In terms of common open space and private open space, the 200 square feet per unit is what staff is recommending for common open space, which could be in one particular area, could be divided up in two areas throughout the project site. As far as private open space, that would be a 200 square feet per unit with a minimum dimension of 10 feet. And as it's known from past projects or experiences, we are making sure in the draft regulations are proposing that stormwater basins cannot be counted towards these open space requirements because it cannot effectively be used as recreational areas. So we want to make sure that that's pretty loud and clear in the regs. As far as driveways, there will be straight-in access from a private street or a public street, minimum of 19 feet long, and basically that would allow for parking on the driveway for guest spaces. So parking spaces, five spaces is what we're proposing. So that would be two in the garage, two on the driveway, one on the street. So you get your total of five spaces per unit. Private streets would meet or exceed our street design standards that we currently already have in our code. Walls and fences, there will be decorative block walls required along the perimeter. However, you can introduce wrought iron when it's appropriate to enhance views. Landscaping, still not reinventing the wheel here, but we'd have the street trees, 24-inch box, landscape parkways, erosion control, obviously, per our landscape manual. And storage is something that we already have in our code, in our multifamily zones and our detached condominium scenario, where you have a minimum 160 cubic feet storage cabinet that's provided for each dwelling unit. Setbacks. So in terms of front yard, we have 20 feet as far as from the driveway line to the garage. That's pretty typical. We have 10 feet from the driveway line to the remainder of the residential unit, so there's a little bit of setback there as well, so it's not all the way to the curb or to the sidewalk. And as far as side yard, it's the 5 feet, and when there is a street side where there's actually a street, you would have 10 feet to provide a little more buffer there. The rear yard would be at 10 feet. Building height standard, what we currently have in our code already, it's 35 feet or two stories, whichever's lowest. And something that we already have in our code is about utilities having to be undergrounded, so nothing new on that one. And if there are any conflicts between standards that are actually here or throughout the development code, then obviously the proposed small lot standards would actually take precedence. That's what we're recommending. As far as process for how to take this through the process, small lot developments would actually be processed either via tentative parcel map or tentative subdivision map, and that really has to do with the amount of lots that are being proposed. So whether they stop at four lots on the tentative parcel map, five or more at a tentative subdivision map, and then we would actually couple that with the site development plan application so that we can actually review the proposed homes that come with it, the elevations, the floor plans, et cetera, so the whole package under that project. That would be reviewed by the planning commission, would be applicable to the city council, just as it is with all the other major subdivision applications. And of course, if there is a request for a zone change where there is maybe a general plan amendment that's requested by the applicant in order to introduce a small lot development, the project would come before city council for preliminary discussion before it actually goes through the regular channels, whether planning, obviously, planning commission recommendation and final review by the city council. In terms of potential sites based on existing zoning, just to get an idea, I'll give you an idea as far as what we're talking about, R1B, RM10, or RM15 zones. Looking at the map, there are about eight to 10 vacant sites that could potentially be utilized and developed with small lot residential development. As primarily being built out our community, there could be opportunities perhaps for rezone or general plan amendments that would allow for a small lot as well. But again, this would require city council to look at it preliminarily before. before any project becomes, any formal subbito actually comes before the city for review. So tonight's staff's recommendation includes basically, we're receiving input from the city council, comments on these proposed requirements for small lot residential development. Next, we would finalize the draft ordinance and then present it to the planning commission for their recommendation. And which at that point, subsequent to that, we would come back to the city council with the final draft, hopefully for adoption of the small development, small lot development regulations. And that concludes staff's presentation. And I'm available for any questions or comments. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much. This was a very thorough report. Looks like every single angle of this issue was described and detailed for the council. I really appreciate that. I know that you're looking for direction. Are you looking for direction in the form of a motion and a vote? Or just nodding heads?
Just nodding heads.
Okay.
That'll be good.
I think this is really a great collection of additions to our development code to establish these smaller lots. I am in favor of this. I know a lot of these particular zones are in District One. And that we don't necessarily, like you said, have like a ton of them in the city that are vacant, but I think this is a good idea. So thank you so much for all the work that went into putting this together. And I am supportive.
Thank you.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you. I am also supportive of this. I think that it would accommodate a lot of our housing needs and also be creative infill development that would allow for more equity in homeownership. I had a question. You mentioned that there would be an opportunity for these developments to come before us if they were to be seeking a general plan amendment. So under what conditions would that be happening? Is it perhaps if they're interested in building in those lower density areas that you were speaking of?
Okay.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And I think that is something to consider in this is that in changing our development code, is encouraging development that is going to make those already higher density areas or moderately high density areas even more high density. So, you know, some of the parts of our city that are lower density, you know, are essentially going to stay that way with this current update, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but it could lead to, you know, in the long term, it could lead to, you know, large disparities, right? Even in our own district maps, for example, for our council districts. So that's just something to consider with how, you know, density upon an already dense area will just make that area denser. So we, you know, have been talking about infrastructure. We've been talking about transit issues. So as we continue to create more opportunity for development, which I know is really important, we want to create incentives and create opportunity for folks to develop appropriate and quality housing here in Vista for our residents. I just am considering, you know, in the future, could this be modified to also include those higher density areas? You know, that might need to expand a little bit, but are still interested in retaining that element of homeownership. So do you have anything to say about that? Potentially expanding this policy in the future?
I think it's something that's always a consideration for further discussion. And I think we probably, what we're trying to do here is introduce the item and see how that actually works in the community. But certainly, if something expands, also based on the general plan that's come to soon, you know, online as far as the update itself, it'll kind of provide additional insight into how that could be the case. But right now, I think we're trying to introduce that where it does make sense based on the potential size of these small lots at 3,600 square feet and not trying to change the whole environment and not create a shock, I guess, so to speak.
Right. You're not, we're not going to be applying it to areas that are, you know, less dense or areas that are too dense. It's going to be right in the middle there. So thank you so much for your detail on this. It was very thorough and based on the details here, I think that it would be an appropriate update. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you very much. I'd like to better understand the impetus. As I understand that the obtaining of financing is a significant issue for buyers of these condo map properties and maybe of my colleagues that are involved. As you said, sometimes this experience is very handy in the land use realm. As somebody who owned a condo map property in the city of Vista, my property wasn't necessarily worth less because the fact that I didn't own the land beneath it, you know, was... I didn't like the fact that I didn't have total control over the plantings and other things. However, one of the things that was incredibly important was there was a common management of these small properties. In a small home, I didn't own a lawnmower or weed eater or, you know, and that all those maintenance tasks were taken care of by the homeowners association, which managed the common property. And one of my deep concerns, as I look at some of the neighborhoods that particularly where we did not, and I know we're always going to make an HOA, but as we look at small developments, where an HOA may not have critical mass to have enough capital to make... I'm really concerned that we are forward-thinking about... And I want to help people get financed, so I think that's the impetus to do this. But I want to think and talk about how we ensure the appropriate maintenance of these communities so that the people that live there long into the future have a property value that grows and that their neighbor's property value grows because the properties are maintained correctly. And, you know, when you have a very, very small yard... I have a friend who lived in one of the new developments in District One, the very north edge of town. They had a very small, I think they paid $8 a week or something to have someone mow this extremely small portion. But for quite a few months before they found somebody to do that work, they didn't own a lawnmower and they just let the grass grow. It was, you know, it's kind of interesting to think that the smaller your property, maybe the more ill-equipped you are for the landscape needs around it. So I don't know if I'm making any sense here, but, you know, you know the problem neighborhood I'm talking about where we don't have an HOA. There's 6,000 square foot lots. There's not a consistent maintenance theme. And it's not good for the property values in that neighborhood long into the future. So I just want to, how do we address the maintenance issue and make sure that Vista is a beautiful city?
So I would be interested to know if any of the projects that you're talking about are developments that have been built in the last 20 years?
The one that I have specific concern about is not. But can you tell me, enlighten me, what we've done in the last 20 years to abate some of these concerns?
We generally have a homeowners association requirement for any project that's a subdivision of more than, say, three lots. And we have specific CCNRs that require landscape maintenance to the nth degree. I mean, every tree is specked, every bush is specked. They're all defined.
Does this preclude a community where the common area maintenance or where the maintenance of the residential yards? I mean, does it necessarily mean if we go to this that there's not going to be common maintenance of those communities?
No, but it's unlikely. I mean, I don't know a lot of ownership properties where the maintenance is commonly done, but it does happen. There's a development, my folks used to live in in Fallbrook where that was a situation. So it's up to the developer and the association to decide how they want to maintain the landscape.
Could it be up to us?
Can we tell a developer that they have to have common maintained landscape front yards on privately owned lots? I don't know. That's not something I've had to tackle before.
That's a very good question.
So we could research that as part of this item and come back.
Where we're at in the process in this, I think it would...
We have time.
Yeah, we have time to take a look at that question.
Sure.
You know, one of the things that we want, we want a safer, cleaner, more beautiful community. And as we make this move to help people get financed, I don't think we want to sacrifice the quality of new developments and the quality of ongoing maintenance into the future. And some neighbors take wonderful care of their properties and some neighbors are not interested in that task. And it's why I think in these smaller developments, it really makes a lot of sense to have a common themed maintenance. And even if it's not necessarily programming every bush in your yard, I think having some standards that are really well enforced and maintained is incredibly important.
Okay, we can research that. Absolutely.
And Deputy Mayor Franklin, just to add to what John Conley was saying, I do know of projects that have a setup as a HOA, CCNRs, that do take care of the front yard landscape, even though it is a single-family subdivision in other cities. And we can definitely take a look at that. So I don't think it's unreal or unrealistic to have that set up. It's because even actually a smaller fee, but because of the limited amount of take care, but it takes care of those big points that you're actually bringing up, so.
What's also great is like painting of the homes, exterior, like roof maintenance could be built into those things. It is in the condo map development, so everybody's home is always painted. Everybody's roof is always in repair. I mean, these are real issues for what do these communities look like in 40 years from now?
I just have to say, though, that the purpose here is to extract ourselves from all of the regulation that we involve in condominium developments because a homeownership lot is really the freedom of the homeowner to do what they want with the lot. So that's what we're trying to advocate for. Understanding the CCNRs and requirements, HOAs that are in place in all of the new subdivisions, these people are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy their home. They're all generally very interested in maintaining their property, especially the people that are running the HOA. So what we're finding is it's becoming more of a problem for us to make sure.
Twenty years from now, the buyer in that home may have less of an interest as the neighborhood ages. And as we get very small properties, we're going to get a patchwork. Look, as I said earlier, I think we should be providing a mixture of... And I think this is really great. This is going to give more people an opportunity to enter the home buying market because of the financing. And I think that's the reason I'm for it. Otherwise, if it wasn't for the financing issue, I really don't see the reason to do this. I honestly don't.
Okay.
Because to me, you say, some people, look, I chose to sell my condo and buy a single-family home because I decided I wanted to have control of my own destiny on my parcel. That was a choice I had because that product existed. I think we need to allow for a diversity of products. And I think a condo map product is one product that developers... And I think there are people who want to live in that product very much. I can tell you when I get much older and I don't want to be out there, you know, snipping the bushes, I probably would have an interest in returning to a maintained community. So, you know, this whole idea of equity in terms of dollars in the property, I mean, I had made great improvement on my equity in that home and was able to take it and roll it into the next one, which was a single-family. So that argument makes no sense to me at all. I don't think it's a valid argument. But if there's an issue about people being able to obtain financing, that's an issue that I can get with and helping young families get financed and get an entry point into the housing market, I'm down with.
It's also confusing to people when you're selling a, you call it a condo and it's actually a single-family home. And you have to list it as a condo because that's what it is. And so as a realtor, you know, people will say, you know, that's a condo. You know, actually, those are single-family homes, you know. So, but they're just small lots and they're, it's hard to explain that to some kinds of people. So I think this is, I think it's a good plan. So, okay, so I'll go to Joe Green, Councilmember Green.
Not Joe Green's good. I like it. Judy, how you doing? So no, I definitely am a fan of this. I do like the idea of, you know, a larger subdivision having some type of overlays. Question I have is on some communities that don't have homeowners associations or CCNRs, which for those of you who don't know are conditions, covenants, and restrictions of the area. There's like road maintenance agreements that are like attached to the deeds. Could we possibly make a stipulation on the small lot ordinance to have a community area maintenance addendum similar to a road maintenance agreement for the area that says it's either an exterior maintenance agreement or a community maintenance agreement where the community, you know, has some type of, you know, like with a private road type deal. So in the event it's not an HOA, I think, you know, something like that, a community area maintenance agreement for the private community would protect the city's interests forever, years down the future because it's attached to the property. So that's my idea for the community area maintenance on things that aren't in HOAs. Another thing, though, is because I don't want them all to be in HOAs because tiny homes are a thing and people are like loving tiny homes. And if I could make a small lot and put a tiny home and get into city infrastructure and actually own that, like that little piece of real estate is worth something. So not only for the financing, but I mean, the possibility of tiny homes, you know, conforming with state guidelines is also a big deal. But from a financing standpoint, detached condos, Mayor Ritter said it. Detached condos, there are single-family houses. And we have, you know, our constituents are like, you keep building condos and apartments and condos, apartments. You'd be surprised, a lot of the condos that we built in Shadow Ridge are detached homes with very small lot lines. There's actually a development in Shadow Ridge that you guys are probably familiar with, the Calypso Legends Development. It's a gated community. Half of it is zoned as a condo. The other half is zoned as a single-family residence. You enter the community through the same gate, but you can't have a pool, you can't share the pool on one side and you can on the other side. They basically look exactly the same, but one of them's zoned SFR, one of them's zoned condo. When you get financing as a condo, there's different stipulations with the homeowners association as far as insurance and articles of incorporation and budgets and all that stuff. So with it being a single-family residence, you don't have to be in compliance with the 200 other units in the area from a budget and bylaw and oversight standpoint. So it does make it a lot easier for financing. And for first-time homebuyers and young Vistons who want to buy houses in the city of Vista, designating these as single-family residence will allow them to buy them on their VA loans, their FHA loans, or those really low down payment conforming loans. So having this zoning within our city is a huge benefit for the community. It can help build wealth through homeownership and also help create opportunity for young families that actually want to get into the homeownership game because rents over the last 12 months in Vista have went up 23.7%. City of Vista has led the county in rent increases this year. Therefore, buying a home and having a fixed payment is an amazing asset for our community. So we want to create as many good opportunities for that for our community as we can. And, you know, with our land use policies as a council, it's a big thing that we need to do. So I'm going to give you a head nod on this one. I think this one checks the boxes that we needed to check. And, you know, we don't want these considered cloud condos. You might not even heard that before, but it's actually a detached condo, that's a cloud condo with no association and you can never get financing on it unless you put 25% down. So having this zoning is a really, you know, big deal. So thank you for working so hard on it. Thank you for the thorough report. I love reading land use reports, Patsy Chow. They're so good. And I'm glad you're not sitting at your desk going over plans today, Patsy. Like to see you smiling. That's all I got.
I just want to say one thing about the tiny homes. Are there restrictions like outside storage and things? There has to be some kind of restrictions on tiny homes, hopefully.
Well, there were, there's descriptions as far as like their garages or their driveway and parking and stuff like that, right?
I can just see people thinking they're going to live in a tiny home and then you accumulate and you accumulate and pretty soon it's like outside. And it's a little, you know, they got storage places, then you got stuff everywhere.
You can just link a few tiny homes together and have a tiny train. Just joking, I apologize.
Anyway, if there are tiny homes, will that come back to us? We have some kind of stipulation, so we can see.
Yeah, we'll look at the outside storage issue for sure, Mayor, and report back on that.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Can you remind me what the minimum square footage requirement here on these particular parcels is going to be or what we're...
3,600 is what's being proposed, 3,600 square feet.
The minimum interior?
No, no, that's the lot size minimum.
But what would the minimum interior space?
We don't have a minimum. I've looked...
There's one of them lots, unit sizes.
We don't have, well, actually, other cities did. And I originally was going to do that, but I think you kind of provided too much restriction and we just got worried that maybe we're limiting too much, perhaps.
I thought we had a minimum on the ADUs. I mean, don't we have a global...
Oh, the ADUs.
Don't we have a global policy that requires a minimum, no matter where it's built?
Oh, for the, in terms of the bedroom sizes, yeah. There is, for different unit sizes in terms of how many bedrooms in there, like three bedrooms, two bedrooms, we do have minimum on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, for a one-bedroom unit, you're asking what the minimum unit size is? I think it's 700.
Why not? We're testing my memory here. Yeah, I think it's about that.
We do effectively have a minimum. Yeah.
There is a minimum, yes.
The other question that Councilman Green raised about the ownership of the street. I mean, normally, when we do these condo mapped, they own the street, right? You're talking about people at a lower-sized property, they're going to have, you know, I have friends... I have friends that live in North Vista, they're on a private street, and one day the neighbors knocked to the door and said, guess what? You know, you owe $8,000, that's your share of the road, because they have a private road. I mean, if you are a first time home buyer, you're in a tiny home, your ability to absorb thousands of dollars of road repairs that are unplanned for is going to be different than.
But it's not unplanned for. So road maintenance obligations are part of the CCNRs and the HOA, so your payment would include the maintenance of the road along with the maintenance of the landscaping and anything else that's wrapped into that.
All right. Again, thinking back to some of the existing properties that didn't have those restrictions.
I live in a development that has CCNRs that are not enforced because there's no HOA, but there is a street maintenance agreement, so we pay quarterly for street maintenance and that's planned for.
As long as that's part of this, because we don't want to leave people with a road that's terrible and then we have people come in and say, you know, geez, the Route 11 is terrible. And we look at them and go, well, don't you know it's private?
Yeah.
You know, that doesn't make them happy.
So those problems that we experience around the city are typically much, much older developments that don't have those agreements in place.
I'm, I'm glad we're solving those problems. Thank you.
And Deputy Mayor, just adding to what John was saying, also, don't forget, we also have the detention basin, so that when those have to be addressed, you don't want that falling in the hands of one specific owner, so it kind of gets spread out through the development as well. So just another example. Thank you. Okay, so you see enough shaking heads?
I think so.
Thank you very much. Okay. So with that, we will move on to our next item, which is, our discussion item is D2, cannabis cultivation, oh my gosh, cultivation and cannabis consumption. Those are three, four C words. So Councilmember Contreras asked for this item to be on the agenda, so I'm going to ask her to introduce the item.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, I just wanted to have a general discussion. I know that we've allowed different uses of cannabis here in the city of Vista, and we wanted to see how those uses would turn out. And in the time that we've had regulatory framework for cannabis in the city, it seems as though some of the concerns that individuals had, thankfully, have not really manifested. So I think this is an opportune time to discuss two additional features of cannabis use that could possibly be permissible here in the city in the future if the majority so wants. And that would be cannabis cultivation and cannabis consumption. I do also want to say that at the federal level, there's an extreme amount of movement regarding cannabis, including a lot of bipartisan support for descheduling cannabis. You know, today, an article came out discussing how Apple has joined Amazon in looking at the cannabis industry, anticipating some of these changes in the private sector and opening up the permissibility at a federal level. So I know fintech companies are really looking at creating better payment options that are digital. And it's really interesting because, as we know, the industry is really fragmented. Some jurisdictions allow it, some jurisdictions don't. So there's a lot of innovation going into geo fencing and allowing certain apps to be accessible to the consumer base in jurisdictions where cannabis is, is legal and regulated. So I just wanted to have a discussion with everybody here and see what the council has to say. My goal would be to hopefully have a majority that wants to explore cannabis cultivation in the city and cannabis consumption in the city of Vista. I would, you know, definitely want to have some robust discussions. It doesn't have to be something that's a one-time discussion and then we got to vote on it. But I would like to direct staff to be able to review these two different options, cultivation and consumption, and bring forth to the council some more information regarding cultivation and consumption. But I do want to hear from any members of the public who want to speak on this and the rest of my colleagues. So I'll save my comments for after I hear from everybody else.
So I have four speakers. Do you want to hear from them first? Okay, so we'll start with Joel Weisberger. He'll be followed by Annie Collins.
My name is Joel Weisberger. I'm with the San Diego County Farm Bureau. I am the Chair of the Farm Bureau's Cannabis Working Group. I'm here to speak today in favor of adopting a cannabis cultivation ordinance in the city of Vista. You know, one thing people don't realize is that San Diego County is one of the top five producing counties of cut flowers in the entire country. The city of Vista houses a lot of those cut flower growers. Recently, a lot of those flower, or those growers have encountered economic setbacks from other countries, countries that don't have the same pesticide regulations and labor regulations. So therefore, the, the cut flower market is dwindling and those legacy farmers are having a lot harder time making ends meet. An adoption of cannabis in this ordinance would allow those legacy farmers to supplement their existing grows with a more profitable commodity and stay in business. I think at the end of the day, most of your farmers, most of the land that would even be available within the city of Vista are legacy farmers, people who helped establish the city of Vista and get it to where it is today. And I think many of those farmers are struggling economically and could definitely use a more profitable commodity to be able to farm and, and introduce into the local supply chain. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Collins, followed by Kelly McCormick.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ann Collins. I'm the mother of an 11 month old baby. And in my age group, I'm well acquainted with the problems that often come when people my age choose to use marijuana. I know the real cost of marijuana consumption to young adults, families, neighborhoods, and society in general. The costs are extremely high in mental health care costs alone. I am especially concerned today regarding the idea of consumption lounges and versions of that in our city. Those would impact public health and marijuana awareness in a negative way by exposing patrons and employees of those businesses and other Vista residents to the harmful effects of secondhand cannabis smoke and vapor. A recent study suggested that the dangerous particulate matter concentrations found from vaping cannabis was similar to indoor spaces where smoking is permitted. So secondhand cannabis smoke and vapor pollutes the air as much or more than tobacco. Those new social, these new social environments for eating and drinking while consuming cannabis will also exacerbate drug driving as there is evidence that cannabis impairs reaction time and other factors involved with driving ability. I've been saddened by friends whose lives have been, whose lives have been impacted by health issues caused by secondhand marijuana smoke and vaping exposure. Vista residents are hopeful that the city will involve city members on decision-making here, or at least postpone any final decisions regarding the marijuana consumption lounges until after COVID and its effects have all been more permanently resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly McCormick, followed by Erica Leary.
This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator with a focus on youth alcohol, tobacco, and drug prevention. And like you, I care about climate change, clean air, and clean water. And I would like to ask that you take a closer look at the environmental impact of marijuana cultivation. An article from a cannabis industry publication detailed numerous environmental harms that should raise concern for a city which hopes to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. In the article, the industry source concludes that marijuana has the potential to more than double the existing rate of volatile organic compounds in the atmosphere. These VOCs contribute to global warming and also may cause respiratory problems for people exposed to the emissions, not to mention the famously bad odor experienced by those living or working near marijuana farms. High energy consumption for indoor grows is another concern. A grow house consumes electricity 24 hours a day, seven days a week to power lights and fans. A University of Colorado study estimates that a 5,000 square foot indoor grow uses almost seven times the electricity as the average home. Wastewater may contain fertilizer runoff and pesticides contaminating the soil and waterways. So I ask that you please consider whether the environmental impacts of pot farming are compatible with the city's environmental goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Erica Leary. I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, which works in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs through community action, education, support, and collaboration. And we've been doing this for over 25 years. And as a public health professional working in North County for that time, I've been striving to advocate that any public discussion about marijuana also include the potential risks and harms related to it, including youth use, used by pregnant women, impaired driving. San Diego had a record number of impaired driving fatalities last year and the year before. Impacts on ER visits, we have an average of 39 ER visits related to cannabis in the county every day, and exposure to secondhand smoke. Unfortunately, not just here in Vista, but up and down the state, discussions often just focus on tax revenue and the illicit market and fail to include any discussion on the impacts or the fact that marijuana is an addictive substance. I realized today that Mayor Ritter was the only one serving on this board when Vista adopted the Healthy Vista Element in its general plan back in 2012. So I participated in this process nearly a decade ago with many organizations, residents, and city staff. It was an important milestone to include the Healthy Vista Element in the general plan, and its stated purpose is to foster community health and well-being as priorities for all Vistins by providing a strategy to incorporate health considerations into the city's policies, programs, decisions, and development activities, and to acknowledge and strengthen the relationship between planning decisions and public health outcomes. It also commits to identifying issues that affect community health and wellness and set the policy framework to improve community health. I ran out of time, so I encourage you to reflect back on Chapter Five. I'll leave a copy up here as you continue your discussion this evening.
Thank you. That's all of our speakers. So I will go to the council and we'll start with Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Contreras, for bringing forward this discussion. My context for engaging in this discussion is knowing that during a lot of conversations with community members during my campaign for office, a lot of folks had the understanding initially that Measure Z was something that would allow them to use cannabis recreationally with regulation in designated areas, and that was not the case. Measure Z was not permitting that, and it also, I think, a lot of people were surprised to learn that some of the opportunities that they wanted to embark on regarding cannabis as a crop, or as a food product, or as a medicinal product, that those weren't permitted. So I think we have an opportunity as a council to talk about, you know, where can we permit the use of this plant and what value does it have in our community? So I'm actually very curious about the environmental impacts of the cultivation of cannabis. I know that it is a carbon sequestering plant and that it has the opportunity to benefit us in that regard. We also know that hemp is a very strong and sustainable crop, and, you know, perhaps it could be used for a number of industrial uses that could be beneficial to the industries here in our local economy. So I'm not super familiar with the cultivation side of cannabis, but, you know, as we're talking about the value of our agricultural space and our changing environments, being able to allow for the creative growth of this plant in our community could be very beneficial. There's also the concern with consumption. I've had residents reach out to me, we've had residents come to speak at council regarding people smoking in public, regarding people smoking near their apartments, in parks, in their cars. And I think that that is a big concern. I don't think anyone who understands the value that cannabis can have in our communities wants to see people publicly partaking in a substance that has mind altering effects. I think that that is highly dangerous and concerning. So when I do hear from residents that this is a problem for them, I'm, I'm concerned. And I think we see with alcohol and other, you know, substances that people want to consume recreationally, that they may have a bar, or a saloon, or a cocktail lounge, or a club that they can go to in a regulated fashion, a person can serve them to the point of, you know, appropriate intoxication and then also monitor them for safety. I think that it's something that we need to talk about, that not everyone has a positive experience when they consume cannabis. And that's something that can be mitigated by consuming cannabis in an appropriate setting that is safe, that is moderated, that is regulated. So I think the context of the conversation with consumption is definitely one about safety and what's appropriate. You know, people who want to use cannabis recreationally as well as medicinally, I think that they want to have the freedom to use it in a social environment. Perhaps it's not within their lease agreement in their apartment where they're allowed to smoke. There could be tenant issues. And again, I know that there's a large concern with public use of cannabis, and that is a big concern of mine as well. So I, I think that it would be an economic advantage to our local economy as well as meet the desires and the interests of our community members if we were to explore the conversation of what is, what are appropriate settings for, you know, of age users of cannabis to consume recreationally. I think that in the city of Vista, there could be appropriate in-person, you know, vendor provided cannabis spaces. So it, there's not a lot of models of what that looks like. Certainly, we don't have anything like that here in the city of Vista. I know that a lot of residents have been curious about it, and I, I want to entertain that conversation as well. I'm very pleased that we have representation from the Farm Bureau here as well. Perhaps we can get even more education on the cultivation side. Perhaps we can get more information on the consumption side. I know there's so many kinds of consumption, right? There may be infused desserts or, you know, edible cannabis that you don't smoke, but you consume as part of a dining experience. There may be a cannabis experience where you are, you know, able to try something in a safe environment with someone who's a, you know, person who can safely administer, you know, the bud to you if you are going to be smoking or vaporizing it. So it could be a dining experience, it could be a smoking experience, and there are many environments for that to occur. So I'm curious what the, the will of our, of our board might look like in regards to that. I know that for me, it's something I'm very open to. I was joking with our city manager, that was one of the first questions I asked him when I was given the city tour is, was about, you know, cannabis consumption and the, the freedom of recreational use. And I'm curious what everyone else has to say. So those are some of my thoughts, and I appreciate the conversation.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So when it comes to marijuana, the city of Vista is on the tip of the spear when it comes to marijuana. We have 11 dispensaries here that were voted in by the people. In August of 2021, this council actually converted those dispensaries to recreational. We also previously spoke about the other aspects of marijuana, manufacturing, distribution, We also previously spoke about the other aspects of marijuana: manufacturing, distribution, delivery, testing, and retail. All of those avenues are legal in the city of Vista, and you can procure a license for it and do it legally. The focused impacts of marijuana have been much less on our community than were thought, which is why we had a unanimous vote to convert them to recreational. We've been able to mitigate those impacts in our community, actually a lot better than I even anticipated. We have a very responsible community, a community that uses marijuana responsibly, and I feel like we've created really good policies within the city of Vista to make sure that it hasn't adversely affected our community. With that said, these two avenues of marijuana that we're talking about, one I'm extremely supportive of, one I'm not. The cannabis cultivation, I'm extremely supportive of. I do think that having Vista cannabis for our Vista dispensaries is a great thing to have. We have Vista Beer for our Vista Breweries in Vista, and having Vista cannabis for our Vista dispensaries would be fantastic. What that looks like, I don't know. I personally am a little hesitant on the outdoor grows, on the outdoor legacy farms per se, simply because of the security aspects, and what type of security you'd have to have? Do you put it in a greenhouse? Is it a locked greenhouse? Is it video monitored and all that? Additionally, the demand of cultivation, I would assume the demand to be a grower of the golden plant is going to be a very, very highly in-demand license. So I would think if staff is going to be investigating this, the licenses should be awarded similar to the dispensary licenses. It should be something that's done in a lottery purpose by qualified cultivators who have the, you know, experience and the licenses, and also can meet all of the security precautions that we're going to need to put, because cultivation is a very lucrative business, and it's a very dangerous business if it's not, you know, protected properly from a safety standpoint. So cultivation is something we do need to implement within the city of Vista. So I definitely appreciate Councilwoman Contreras bringing this forward. As far as my idea and kind of my suggestion for cultivation, I would be open to three cultivation establishments within the city of Vista, where those would be located would probably be defined by staff after a little further investigation. I know that we have a great, you know, industrial park area where you could do some type of indoor grow. We did speak about, or I heard one of the speakers, I believe either Mrs. Leary or one of the other ones, spoke about the effect of all the electric that you use to grow inside. Maybe we put an overlay that if you're going to have an indoor grow, it needs to be ran via solar, and not just potentially solar, like a lot of the developers do, where it's plumbed for solar and they don't put it on. Legit put solar on your, you know, on your indoor grow facility. And then maybe we do have an outdoor grow option somewhere in the hills of Vista that's a safe location that staff can come up with. So cultivation, I don't see that as a problem. I think it's going to be a great, very lucrative business for somebody within the city that can, you know, actually do it right. I also believe with Measure AA, we already have a tax structure for cultivation and all other avenues of marijuana. So I think this is something that staff could come up with pretty reasonably, and I think we would have the majority of council support, for sure, on some cultivation within the city of Vista. So I'm definitely into that. As far as consumption goes, and I have heard that there are some lounges in Palm Springs that are attached to dispensaries, however, there are none in San Diego County that I've been aware of, and I happen to have a good amount of friends in the marijuana industry, believe it or not. And I really believe, as far as my city goes right now, we don't have an avenue set up for consumption. I also have questions on legalities, which I'm going to kind of direct to my city attorney. It was my understanding that, like, is it a state law or whatever, as far as onsite consumption of marijuana products? Is there some type of law against that, or is that just our ordinance within the city?
Well, there is a law, and it is our ordinance.
So it's both.
It's Measure Z, and under the general operating standards, under Measure Z, smoking, ingesting, or consuming marijuana by customers at the location of a medical cannabis dispensary is prohibited. That cannot be changed without a vote of the people.
Okay.
And in terms of our adult use, adult-use cannabis businesses can only be co-located and within the same physical premises as the medical cannabis dispensary, which means, in effect, no consumption.
Okay.
In fact, that is also written into the adult law. Now, that could be removed from the adult law, but there's no way to get around the problem.
The vote of the people.
And the medical.
Exactly. So, you know, with the consumption aspect, if it's got to be changed by a vote of the people, I would say that's something you might want to look into. I don't feel comfortable with a consumption location in the city of Vista. I don't want to be the first consumption location in our county. I also want to make sure from a testing aspect that there's, you know, good testing for, you know, the DUI aspect is how high are you? When's the last time you smoked? I know with marijuana testing in different, you know, with marijuana becoming legal, a lot of different employers have had to change their testing policies and, you know, defining marijuana as a recreational drug as opposed to an actual drug. But marijuana stays in your system for, I don't know, 20 or 30 days or something like that, and I don't know, because I'm not a scientist, if there's any way to tell if you smoked last week, or if you smoked an hour ago. And from people driving around in our city after leaving a consumption lounge, that's where my big concern is. I've traveled pretty much all over the place, Amsterdam is one of those places, and I have visited lounges. And in cities where they typically have consumption like that, there's not a lot of motorized vehicles, at least that I've seen. It's like a bunch of bikes and people walking around. We have so many cars and drivers, and I just don't know how you would do it. Again, I've never, you know, been to one in America. I don't know how they do it. If they did it with bracelets, is, hey, you get an orange bracelet, you can smoke for an hour, and then you got to sober up for two hours before you leave? Like, maybe it's a color-coded bracelet system, I have no clue. But I do think that's something that should go to the vote of the people, because if you're going to say, hey, we're going to start letting members of your community smoke this substance, and possibly get in their car and drive, or walk, or ride a bike, and you previously voted that you didn't want that to happen, you should have to vote again for it to happen, in my opinion. So consumption, I don't feel like I have the authority to make that decision, nor am I in favor of it. However, cultivation, money in the bank, pardon the pun from a money in the bank situation, but it is a lucrative business for the three new business owners, potentially, if the council agrees to it. That could bring it to our town. Obviously, we want to make sure there's safety measures, and we want to make sure that the license-awarding process is fair and non-biased, so that there's no chance of any outside, you know, coercion of who gets those licenses. It's a very big deal, similar to how the retail establishments were awarded. So that's my take on it. Thanks so much for bringing it forward, and I'd like to hear what my other council members say.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, Councilmember Green, I think you made some excellent points about the consumption, and that is interesting to kind of remember that that was a condition of Measure Z and industry advocates that qualified Measure Z wrote that initiative. So we may be stuck with those until the people want to amend it. I would tend to agree. I mean, I was in favor of, I think, once the voters authorize a business and say, we want this to be legal, we want this product, I said then we should allow for the sundry businesses like the distribution, the testing, the other, you know, necessary things that make those businesses function. I would probably agree to a very limited number of licenses, three sounds reasonable to me. I would only support it if it was indoors. I've got a friend who lives just outside of your district in the county, and he's got an illegal neighbor, illegal grow in a farm adjacent to his property, and they do not like the smell of it. So, you know, the rights of the neighbors, if you're growing a product that creates a foul odor in the neighborhood and a security concern, I think that's something that we have to take very seriously. But if it could be safely done in an interior space, I agree with you, it should absolutely be required to have solar to mitigate the power consumption. I would think also, I mean, I don't know anything about indoor growing, but I would also think, you know, like solar tubes and daytime skylights would let some, you know, supplement some of the, I don't know. But that's something, but the solar requirement to mitigate the fans and the other electric, I agree with that. So, you know, I think we could probably come to a compromise agreement. I, too, you know, have talked to some of the people in the business who've said that they would like to be able to market a product that's grown here in Vista. So I wouldn't be opposed to a very limited initial offering, and I totally agree with you, the licenses need to be awarded by lottery that nobody here in this building has any control over, other than setting the qualifications, and, you know, rigorous minimum qualifications for who would, you know, be eligible. But beyond that, there should be a pool, and we should draw by lot, the way we did with Measure Z. That way, there's no corrupt influence in determining who gets it.
Well, and I'll go on the consumption. I agree with both of you. I would, there's no state regulations, and we have to vote of the people, and I just wouldn't support it. I don't think that they can judge how high anybody is right now when they drive, and so until somebody figures that out and the state regulates it, you know, I wouldn't even consider it at all. And then the other thing on the cultivation, I don't want to turn a business park into a cannabis park. You know, I don't, I don't mind being the beer capital of whatever the, you know, I don't want to have, be the cannabis capital. So I would, if we had to have one or two, I might go with one or two, but I, you know me, I don't really like any of that stuff. So anyway, that's who I, so, okay, so back to who's next. Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, you know, I wanted to put consumption on here because I wanted to talk about cultivation, and I figured might as well also just discuss consumption. And, you know, it's a conversation that I had with our city manager in taking a look at what actually can be done. I, I would be in favor of letting the people of Vista make that decision. I understand that that could have some kind of costs associated to it, and it would probably be for a different discussion, but I'm really excited about the discussion that we're having about cannabis cultivation, because I do think that not only, like I said, we're seeing all this movement on the federal side in regards to the legality of cannabis and possible descheduling of it, but, you know, we already do have dispensaries here in the city of Vista, and I always want to make sure that we're providing an advantage to our business community, not to exceed, you know, public safety requirements. But I do think that, you know, looking back at the history that we've had since the implementation of Measure Z, it's been pretty successful here. So I'm glad, I'm glad that we're having this discussion. I think cultivation is the new frontier here in Vista. I do have some concerns, though, with putting additional restrictions on the business by stating that, you know, they need to be solar, because I would have to take a look at other businesses and what their electrical consumption would be, and if they were exceeding what this cannabis business, cultivation business, was using, then should they also have to have solar panels? You know, so I, I understand, you know, I'm a huge environmentalist, I understand, you know, where that's coming from, but I feel like it is an unnecessary addition. So I would be in favor of looking at a limited amount of cultivation in, and I would want to get more information about the outdoor. I think, you know, from the conversations that I've had, it seems more feasible to do indoor, but I think it also is important to take a look at the overall economy and see how this could plug into it, because if there's a successful way to do outdoor cultivation, you know, maybe it's not a huge operation, maybe it's a little bit smaller because the crop, you know, yields a profit where you could maybe have a smaller operation. So I think it's important for us to get information both on outdoor and indoor cultivation, just for the sake of having the information, but it seems like there's a council majority, at least for indoor cultivation. So I will go ahead and, and make a motion that staff bring back more information on cannabis cultivation with a restriction of three licenses, in that the process would be similar to the lottery process for Measure Z. I also, I don't know if council would be in favor of this, but I do think that, you know, the lottery system is a good system. However, some of the, maybe the scoring of the application, you could get a higher score somehow if you're already a local grower here in San Diego County. I don't know if there's a way to do that, but I think that would be a good idea. So I don't know if that's enough clarification on the motion, that it would be a maximum of three, that the process would be similar to Measure Z, that there would be investigation of, of scoring applications based on farmers who are local, conducting that cannabis cultivation, in that we would look at outdoor and indoor. But I do have the understanding that we may not have a majority for outdoor. Is that clear enough of a motion? Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Green.
Just Joe. Hi, Judy. So, thank you, Councilwoman Contreras. I didn't know, I guess she made a motion, I'm going to talk about it real quick. I had a question for President of the Farm Bureau. Is that, is that your title, sir? Come on up. Can you come on up here so I can just ask you a quick question? Tell me your title and your name one more time, so I can write it down, because I might need to pick your brain.
Yeah, absolutely. Name's Joel Weisberger. I am the Chairman of the Cannabis Working Group at the San Diego County Farm Bureau.
Perfect, Joel Weisberger. So I'm assuming, have you ever worked with anybody who grows marijuana outdoor?
Yes, I have.
No way. So, question for you, smell mitigation. The reason why most of us recommend indoor is because there are areas to, you know, there are ways to purify the smell and make sure that there's no smell on an outside grow. Is there a way? I mean, I know we can put it in like a, we could say it's indoor in like a plastic greenhouse. Can you mitigate the air in a greenhouse like that, or how does that work?
Yes, you absolutely can mitigate the air in the greenhouse. Basically, what they do is greenhouses have, they intake air and exhaust air through using big fans. So on all of your exhaust side of your greenhouses, when you're exhausting, it's basically a ring. Imagine like a back porch mister system.
Gotcha.
Right? So it's a ring with a mister system that pumps a mixture of essential oils, essentially, into the air. So it's basically, I don't know, I mean, for lack of a better term, it's like a bathroom spray.
And there's no, now, on these greenhouse systems, because it's kind of like a hybrid of outdoor, indoor, I guess, are there actually lights inside the greenhouses, or do the greenhouses strictly function off regular sun? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, so there's multiple ways you can do it. And most of the greenhouses we talk about would be what they call light depot greenhouses, or light deprivation greenhouses. And what that does is use the power of the sun, and then during the times that you need to control the photo period, which is the amount of daylight that it gets, it has a big canopy that can pull over and, and can close it off from the outside. A lot of greenhouses do use supplemental light. The supplemental light is either for growing, or you can use a lower wattage light, just to control the daylight hours. So an example of what that be, there's two main stages of the growing cycle of the plant, which is the vegetative stage and the flowering stage. As long as the plant stays at a more than 16 hours a day of sunlight, it'll stay in the vegetative stage, which it means it grows vertically, and then when the grower, when it reaches the desired height, the grower would then flip the light cycle to a 12 hours on, 12 hours off, in order to trigger it to start its flowering process. So.
So you have to supplement that light, because there's not 16 hours of light?
To an extent, yeah. So certain times of the year, you would have to run some lights to supplement to keep your stuff in veg. Another nice thing about the light depot greenhouses, though, is that in other municipalities, light pollution is brought up as.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, so, like in Oceanside, what they've done is, Oceanside requires you to pull your curtains at night. So if you're going to run your supplemental light, you pull your curtains over your greenhouse, and that way you aren't affecting the neighbors with light pollution. At the state level, they have multiple tiers of licenses for, depending on the wattage of lights you're using. So you can use light for supplement for growing, or you can use a much lower wattage that's literally just for photo, photo period manipulation. And those licenses, they have different price tiers for the, for the license, and basically what it's saying is that if you want to run full blast, you're going to pay for it, or you can be a little bit more environmental, you can utilize LED lights.
Okay.
And, and use less lights per square foot.
Is it because the high voltage lights yield crops faster than the outdoor?
It's more, it's more intensity. So if you're, if you're using. So if you're using, so at the end of the day, there's not an artificial light that will substitute the power of the sun.
Okay.
But what growers are doing is, say in the wintertime, your sun comes up, you get full peak. But by three in the afternoon, it's at an angle. So coming through your greenhouse, you're not getting the same light intensity. So what they have is the highly sophisticated systems that will actually have light sensors within the greenhouse that will kick on certain corners. So say as the light goes down, you get one corner that gets dark. It'll kick on four lights in the corner to keep the lights on those. And then when it goes down completely and doesn't need, it'll kick them off. So.
It's not like just planting it in your backyard with a fence around it and your neighbors are going to smell it type deal? Wow, okay, that sounds very, okay, next question I have for you, Chair Guy Joel, is out of the farmers that you represent, what percentage would you say cannabis farmers are growing outdoor and what percentage are growing indoor? Would you say there's a much more market for cannabis farmers indoor or outdoor?
You know, right now, I'd say the biggest market is for a light depot greenhouse.
Which is outdoor?
Yeah, it depends on how you want to call it. These light depot greenhouses have steel frames, they have polycarbonate walls on them, they're secure facilities. It's not like the hoop houses that we think of where we're just pulling plastic over some.
Question for my city attorney, is that considered an outdoor grow or an indoor grow? If it's a greenhouse outside like that, how?
I think that's how you would define it when you create your ordinance.
Look at the city attorney. All right, I'm going to get out of the weeds with you, Joel. Ah, see that, get out of the weeds. Anyway, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. I just, you've obviously done a lot of research, you're much more knowledgeable than we are at this. And when we get into cultivation, I'd like to make sure that staff obviously gets all that information squared away because it sounds like even if it is outdoor, it's not really going to have those mitigated impacts or those focused impacts on the surrounding neighbors that a regular outdoor would per se. I don't know.
Yeah, and I mean, we could talk for hours on the subject. I am available to speak with you guys if you have other questions at any time. You can reach me through.
All right, thank you Joel, appreciate you. Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney and thank you, Madam Mayor, for the floor.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, Joel, for all the information. I think if there is a majority of the council that wants to move forward with this, the Farm Bureau here in San Diego County would probably be a great resource to our staff. So I think it would be important for us to work in conjunction to a certain degree with the Farm Bureau, specifically maybe even the cultivation group. Because we want to make sure that we get this right. And I don't think that we have the professional staff that probably cultivates cannabis on a daily basis. So I think we're going to need some expert help. But I want to just thank you so much for that information. And I think, you know, one thing that was illustrated is that we could potentially have outdoor operations that aren't blight or a plague upon the city. So, and they're going to be regulated, you know, we get the authority to kind of put some of that into code. So thanks.
Councilmember Green.
Last thing, which I should have done last time, is I will be seconding Corina Contreras's motion. I do want to specify verbiage though, all right? So she said that she wants to move that we send staff to research putting three cannabis cultivation establishments within the area. She doesn't want to overlay solar as a requirement yet till we get more information, that's fine. However, instead of calling it a scoring application, I would prefer that it's a local bidder slash local grower preference because I think that's something that we already do with some of our things we put out to bid. As we say, we have a local bidder, you know, a local contractor, a local bidder. So if we could put a local grower preference in there, that would be okay. However, if it muddies the waters at all from a preference level, our attorney can let us know. But I'm into local bidders because I'd much rather have a San Diego grower come and grow in Vista than somebody from Oregon or Colorado or something. Let's, you know, let local businesses, you know, work in our area. That's it. So I do second her motion with the caveat that it's a local bidder slash grower preference.
Councilmember Contreras.
I accept the amendments to verbiage for the motion, thanks.
See no, Deputy Mayor, are you wanting to talk?
Yeah, just real quick, I would like to at least consider our Measure Z business owners, whether or not, if they're willing to put the resources up and can obtain the correct licensure, if they could be, you know, considered. Because some of these business owners may want to compete to have a facility that, you know, they can, and they're already here, they're already known to us. So we may want to at least qualify them. Not, we don't necessarily have to prefer them, but at least qualify them.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Franklin, for that. Would, if they already exist in the city of Vista, would that fall into local bidding situation? I mean, could we define that in that way?
You certainly could. Our existing, for other purposes, our existing local preferences within the city of Vista. I believe Councilman Green expanded that to the county because I suppose in theory, there shouldn't be any existing local growers in the city of Vista. But yes, definitely Measure Z businesses could be qualified along with along with a broader range of operators from the county.
Okay, yeah, that's great. I accept that, thanks.
So see no more buttons pushed, I guess we'll go for the vote. I stand alone, motion passes. Okay, so moving on to oral communication, do we have oral communications? We have no oral communications, we have no speakers this evening. So with that, I will do my little thing here, a little blurb. So we have art volunteers are offering tax preparation for seniors at the senior center on Monday through Thursdays. You must have an appointment and you can schedule it by calling 760-643-5290. Second, the Vista Library's free photography exhibit, A Poem in Silence is on display at the library through March 31st from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And lastly, there are still tickets left for the Moonlight Club M Performance Never Home Alone with Kevin and Kristen Hoffo Cupman this Saturday, February 26th. And subscription tickets for the summer season went on sale today. I know that because they were busy over there today and the phones were busy. Ticket information for shows and subscription is available online at moonlightstage.com. So those are my things. So I'll start with Deputy Mayor, we'll go on down the line.
Nothing else to add tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Feel free to swing by 508 Tavern for amazing Korean barbecue tacos. They're open for 32 more minutes here in the city of Vista. Happy Taco Tuesday, Vista. Thanks everybody for showing up.
Councilmember Contreras. Thank you to all my coworkers on staff for the incredible job that you do every single day and in preparing the council and bringing information to the public record. And thank you to all my colleagues for our robust discussions. And if it doesn't rain tomorrow between 9:00 a.m. and 9:15, meet up at Luz Duran Park and we're going to go pick up some trash for a little bit. But if it does rain, I will not be there and no one else will be there either. Because it's really hard to pick up trash when it's floating everywhere and it's kind of messy. So with that, I hope everybody has a really fantastic night and a blessed rest of your February. Thanks.
Councilmember Melendez.
Nothing more from me, everyone have a good night, thank you.
City Attorney.
I mean. I was looking at him, so I looked right by you.
I have one item, just that we have, we have a workshop tomorrow night on redistricting at 5:30 in the community room. So anybody that's willing to participate, that'll be your last opportunity for a workshop before we come to council on March 8th and the MAPS middle process as well. So tomorrow night, 5:30, community room.
Sorry, City Attorney.
Nothing further, thank you, Mayor.
How about our city clerk?
Just another reminder that we have applications for the Vista Leadership Academy for the spring, starts on March 9th. So if you're interested, you can contact me or check out the website. Thank you.
How about our assistant city clerk? Okay, so with that, see nothing else, so we are adjourned at what time? 8:30, 8:30 on the nose.